Start the meeting, we've got a little, a few seconds left. We go nine o'clock. Okay, before we start the meeting, we've got a really full room this morning, and I just want to ask everyone to please be orderly and respectful of each other. Hold your applause, it's not a cheerleading squad for anything, and just let's be orderly and businesslike, please. Before we start today, we're gonna have a moment of silence for Mayor Punk Walker. He was a great man. If any of you crossed over the Memorial Bridge this morning, you can thank him, or we'd still be on that old raggedy two-lane bridge. He did a good job there. He was a pharmacist here in our community, and a great veteran flying over thirty-five missions in four war zones. Not many people can claim to that. So, if you would, join me with, we'll have the invocation by Reverend Eddie Smith from the First Assembly of God, and the pledge allegiance led by Commissioner Palisir. Before we start, let's, let's have a moment of silence for Mayor Walker. Okay, Reverend Smith?
Let us pray. Father, we thank you for today, God, that we can gather in this great county. Father, I thank you that our better days are laying ahead of us, Lord. And I thank you for these, these men and women that you placed an authority to help guide this county into the future, Father. Lord, we just pray over this county against the spirit of poverty, we release the, the spirit of prosperity, Lord. And Father, we know that it comes from you. And today, God is, they go through this agenda and, and this business, Father. We just ask that you lead, God, and direct them, Father. I pray, Father, that this would be the time and the hour of unity in this community. Lord, I pray that you would draw in businessmen and women, Father, to start new businesses here in Putnam County, to make Putnam County the best county in the state of Florida. And Father, once again, I, I pray for our former mayor's family, God, as they are walking through this season of grieving. Father, I thank you that you left us a comforter, and you left us a strength in the Holy Spirit. Be with them and that family as they walk through this season. And Father, we just thank you that today, that you're guiding this meeting, that you're guiding this county into the future, to its better days, in the name of Jesus we pray. Amen.
Please, join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioners, next in the packet, you have the minutes from the November seventeenth, two thousand fifteen meeting. At this time, I will entertain a motion.
Move approval, sir.
Motion for approval on the floor.
Second.
Have a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. The minute's passed. That was also for the November twenty-fourth meeting, excuse me, missed that. Okay, next, we're gonna have the employee recognition. Rick, I'm gonna turn the floor over to you, and I'm gonna go to the podium.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is the time when the county announces its Employee of the Year selection. Prior to doing that, I would like to ask those individuals who have been honored during the previous four quarters as employees of the quarter, to come forward and join the chairman at the podium. I will call your names and ask you to come forward. The previous honorees were Mr. Sam Willis with the Utilities Division of the Public Mr. Carl Carnes with Public Works Department, Road Division. Jake Tolet, a paramedic with Emergency Medical Services. Is Jake not with us this morning? All right, and Ms. Debbie Wilkinson with Emergency Medical Services, Billing and Support These individuals were selected by a committee that reviewed nominations and selected them from among those nominees, and that same committee has reviewed their nominations as quarterly winners, and has selected an Employee of the Year from among these four persons. Each of them is equally, equally worthy of being recognized, but the committee has selected Ms. Debbie Wilkinson as Employee of the Year.
Thank you, Rick. I can't think of anybody more well-deserving. We go back a long way, and you've got our Collections Department at the ambulance service in great order, and we appreciate that, Debbie.
Hey, it's not for the employees, you know, it takes everybody none to take just one.
That's right. Okay, we appreciate it. You've got a plaque there in recognition of your great service, and if you'd like, I'd keep this envelope, but you probably won't, don't you? All right, Debbie, thank you so much. And the other Employees of the Year, thank you. The best person won out, didn't they?
Certainly the prettiest.
Commissioner comments?
We certainly, again, want to, to say to each of you all, thank you for what you do. Many times, you are the unsung heroes throughout our county, but you do what you do, and you do it well, because you have continued to educate yourselves, continue to stay up on top of the modern technology that is associated with running your departments efficiently as a team player. And so, thank you so very much to each of you all, and even in Jake's absence. And, and again, to our Employee of the Year, you are the ambassador. You're the person who is, is the face and the place, and you're representative of all of those individuals within our county that give of themselves tirelessly each day, and it makes us much better. Thank you.
Anybody else from Commissioners?
Carl said it all.
Everyone wants the envelope. Thank you again, Debbie.
Okay, next on the agenda, Mr. Tim Parker, our property appraiser. You'd come forward, and he is, has an employee recognition also. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. I'd like to thank the County Commission and the citizens of Putnam County for allowing me the privilege to recognize one of our employees for the years of service. Clay has been with our office for fifteen years, initially employed as a field appraiser. In two thousand, Clay was promoted to Deeds and Mapping Supervisor in two thousand and five. Clay had the opportunity to take a job in Tallahassee with the state of Florida, and instead chose to remain in Putnam County and. Clay Davis acting as our Deeds and Mapping Supervisor, responsible for making sure all our deeds recorded in the county get into our system, and that we are only utilizing those qualified as market transactions for analysis of our tax roll. We are audited each year by the state of Florida, and Clay and his department have consistently scored close to, if not a hundred percent, every year. Clay is also responsible for our GIS mapping, which is one of the most powerful and informative in the state. Clay also has many others' duties that would take too much time for me to list. Suffice it to say that he's an invaluable member of our, of our office, and has guided us through numerous statute changes over the years. I always count on Clay to give me solid, solid, sound advice when difficult decisions have to be made in our office. Clay is married to Teresa, and has two sons, Carson and Evan, and is very involved in our community. So, we have a plaque that reads Certificate of Appreciation. We hereby express our sincere appreciation to Clay A. Davis for outstanding service and contributions to the citizens of Putnam County for fifteen years, and award this certificate from Putnam County Property Appraiser this eighth day of December two thousand and fifteen. Join me in congratulating Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Tim, and congratulations, Clay. Okay, next on the agenda, Commissioner Harris is going to present a proclamation recognizing the One Book One Putnam Reading Season starts in January for two thousand and sixteen. Our chief librarian, Mr. Steve Crowley, is with us. If you'd come to the podium, please, sir. With your gang, that's right. Welcome, sir.
Thank you. My posse is a bit reduced this time, but it's a good, strong group of people.
We'll hear the proclamation, and then some remarks from you, Mr. Crowley. Thank you.
Okay. Whereas reading is an important activity for all the residents of Putnam County, and whereas less than half of the adult American population now reads literature, the Board of County Commissioners wishes to encourage all of the county residents, both young and old, to read. Whereas reading is one way to create bonds within a family, and among friends, and neighbors, we want everyone in the community, from high school students and office workers to public officials and senior citizens, to read and discuss a great book together. Whereas One Book One Putnam is encouraging all residents to read Laura Lee Smith's Heart of Palm, a deep, compassionate, and often heartbreakingly funny portrait of a wild, complex southern family on the brink of massive change. And whereas this program aims to revive reading, therefore, in support of this goal, there will be several visits by the author, and there will be book discussions, art contests, and parties. And whereas the Board of County Commissioners knows the residents of Putnam County will benefit and learn from reading this book. And whereas One Book One Putnam is celebrating twelve years of encouraging reading throughout Putnam County, now therefore be it proclaimed that the Putnam County Board of County Commissioners does hereby support learning through reading as promoted by One Book One Putnam, and proclaims January and February two thousand and sixteen as One Book One Putnam Reading Season, and congratulates One Book One Putnam on its twelve years of promoting reading and discussion. Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion that we adopt this proclamation.
Motion on the floor for adoption, and we have a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It has it. Welcome, Mr. Crowley, and tell us about Laura Lee Smith and the Heart of Palm.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I appreciate it. As always, from the depths of the bottom of my little heart, I need to thank you all for the support that you give to One Book One Putnam. You don't pour thousands of dollars into it, but you allow the library system and its staff to manage this program, which benefits all of the residents of Putnam County, and we sincerely appreciate that. And I need to begin with an apology. Normally, at this time, we present you all with copies of the book. Logistics unfortunately don't always work out the way they should, and the books have been ordered, but they haven't quite arrived yet. So, once they arrive, we will get you copies, certainly in time to get it read before January and February. Laura Lee Smith's book is a neat, neat story. It's set in a mythical town called Utina, Florida, which is somewhere north of St. Augustine, so it's a very local setting for a book. It's an area that we're all familiar with, I think. If you've driven up Route One and A-1A, you've probably gone through Utina, or something like that. And one of the reviewers did describe it as a deep, compassionate, and often heartbreakingly funny portrait of a wild, complex southern family, and that probably describes most southern families. But it's a story that I think we can identify. It's a story about new versus old, about development versus keeping the traditional alive in communities. And so, I think it's a book that fits our time and our place very much, and I just encourage everybody to read it. We will be having discussions, and the author lives in St. Augustine, so she is going to be over here for most all of our book discussions, for both the kickoff and the finale, so there are going to be a great number of opportunities to interact with her. So, there's just gonna be a lot of fun stuff happening. I encourage everybody to become involved with the book, and certainly challenge all of you to read it, 'cause it's just a neat, neat read. And I do appreciate, again, your support for all that you do for reading in Putnam County.
Now, Steve, is she from St. Augustine?
That I do not know. I don't know if she's local or not, but she has certainly captured the.
Well, I thought it was coincidence that the Usina family, and this is the town of Utina.
That's Utina, that, you know, that didn't occur to my mind as we thought about the book.
Putnam County is mentioned in this book, is normally?
Mm-hmm, yeah, it's another one of those that, that's very familiar with our residents, and should resonate with them as they read it.
Mr. Chair?
I saw, yes.
I just want to say how much I've enjoyed what your committee has done, One Book One Putnam. Twelve years has really flown by, and there's been so many enjoyable things when you meet the author, and you have committees, and you have the discussions. It just brings the whole community together, and it's a part that I really enjoy. Thank you, and congratulations on twelve years.
Thank you.
Commissioner Chairman? Yes.
Steve, thank you so much for reassuring me that we will get a copy of the book. Melrose Library sent mine to me, and said they need it back by January one. I'm like, I better get busy.
Read fast.
It's quite a big, thick book, so, yeah, I'll be, I'll be moderating that in February in Melrose.
Very cool. We appreciate that, and we do appreciate your direct support, too, as well.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank y'all very much. Okay, I can back up and do that, no problem. Commissioners, our attorney would like us to offer a, a motion on the November twenty-fourth minutes. I left them out. I apologize. We have motion on the floor.
Second.
Second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Okay, next, we have our Health Department Director, Mary Garcia. You can make your way to the front, and welcome this morning, ma'am.
Thank you, good morning.
That's a box of goodies, you need another one.
That's a box of goodies. Today, I'm very happy to be here as a representative of the Region Three Healthcare Coalition that Putnam County is a part of. Every year, there is a, an award that is presented by faith-based organizations and the community-based council, Advisory Council, with the work of a community member that, to recognize a community member who has been working with the Health Department to increase preparedness for Putnam County, to increase the mission and the guiding goals and principles of being prepared in case of a community disaster. And this award is called the Champion of Hope Award, and I'm gonna let Mike Patterson say a few words.
Good morning, Mike.
Good morning, sir. Good morning, Commissioners. This year's award was awarded to the Mount Tabor First Baptist Church of Palatka, Florida, and it's a state award by the Department of Health. We appreciate, there's, I listed over thirty points that, and I'm not going to read them for, for your edification, you can read them later if you so desire, but this year, it's Mount Tabor.
Okay, we have somebody here representing. Is there a representative in Mount Tabor? Fay Davis, is she in the audience? Ms. Fay, come forward, please, ma'am. Good morning.
We're so happy to present this two thousand and fifteen Champion of Hope Award to the Mount Tabor First Baptist Church of Palatka. In appreciation for your exceptional leadership and dedication to the service of the citizens of Florida, we honor you for your work with at-risk children, children in care, and families in need to promote their health, happiness, and overall success. Thank you. Representative, would you like to join us? The church, not as a commissioner.
I heard that church has a fine pastor. Mrs. Davis, thank you so much for the community's support, and in an area that's much needed. And for your group to reach out and win this award, I know that you work very hard, and we really appreciate it. Any other Commissioner comments?
No, just congratulations and thanks. We're, we're very proud of you. Do they want to say anything?
Ms. Davis, yes?
I want to take this opportunity to say, this is an effort, a team effort, under the leadership of Commissioner Reverend Carl Flag, our pastor. He has spearheaded everything that we do under God's orders, and we're just the foot soldiers that follow orders. And we're certainly, this is our community, and we are certainly humbled to be the ones that God is using to reach out to those who need us, because like, they need us, we need them. And it's a blessing to be able to serve, because that's what we are. We are servants, correct?
Thank you, ma'am, so much. Okay. All right, next on the agenda, we're going to go into our public comment section. If you have a comment or would like to participate, we limit this to three minutes, and I'll remind everybody, it's your turn to comment, but to expect a dialogue is, is not gonna happen, I have to say, because the Commissioners are not prepared sometimes for the questions. But, we do have department heads here, and many times after your comments or questions, they will meet you in the hallway and get your phone number to exchange the information needed or you might be requesting. So, first on our list this morning is Carolyn Swope. Next will be Michael Cavell, I think.
Mr. Chairman, while Ms. Swope is coming, as a point of order, can we make it known that discussion on the Joint Legislative Auditting Committee decision is not going to be discussed during this particular part of our meeting?
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
I feel this is a sad but necessary day. I would like to share an apropos quote from my late husband, Warden Robert D. Swope, who had a twenty-five career with the Federal Bureau of Prisons. He said, "At the end of the day, all we have is each other and our own personal integrity. Shame on you if you violate either one." Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Swope. Okay, next. Michael A. Cavell, am I saying that right? From Georgetown? Did I butcher the last name, sir? I'm sorry, it's, I'm reading what I, what I see. Straighten us out. Pull that microphone up there, class, there you go.
Apparently, apparently my handwriting is truly atrocious.
Got it. Welcome, sir.
King is my last name, K-I-N-G.
Okay, that's not what I have here.
Good morning.
Morning.
I'd like to proffer a Freedom of Information Act request regarding the Drayton Island Ferry. At this time, the residents of Drayton Island are not being adequately served by the ferry due to the condition of the island landing. I believe there was a meeting that was an impromptu meeting that occurred last week. I'm sure there wasn't time to notice anyone, but I am told by certain people that were in the meeting that there is going to be a, quite a delay in getting a resolution to that. And I'm given to understand now that we don't have access to emergency vehicles because of a weight limit that's been imposed because of the condition. So, I'm very concerned, because I know that several years ago, we procured a grant from the federal government. Congressman Michael was our representative, and at the time, he was the chairman of the Transportation Committee. And I believe it was somewhere in the neighborhood of a million dollars. I, I need to know, or, and some of my cohorts need to know, exactly what happened with that money, and when we can expect redress of the issue. So, I don't know who to offer this information request to.
I'm gonna have someone meet you in the hallway. There's Mr. Chaco Fitz. Can you have personnel meet Michael, and they'll get your information? And there was a meeting last week, and I think they, we can get you up to date.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Merle Sparkman. Mr. Sparkman? Don, do you have somebody that can get his information? Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir. How are you?
Merle Sparkman, one oh-three, from Mingle Boulevard, Carolina.
Mr. Sparkman, pull that microphone real close. There you go, sir. Thank you.
I, I see where we have a pledge of cylatory. I think I'd like to remind everybody not to just use that here, but why don't we use that when we leave? It'd be, it'd be a good idea. Thank you.
Okay, we thank you, Mr. Sparkman. Okay, next, we have Mrs. Sparkman, Fay Sparkman.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm here today to ask the question about the last meeting. Do we have bylaws that tell you how you can put a motion in place and vote on it? Because at the last meeting, no, you did not call for a raise of hands, so I was just curious. If there is bylaws, could it be made public, maybe put it in the newspaper or something so people know what we're looking at when you're doing something? The people here today, I think you'll look out in the audience, were here to respect Mr. Larry Harvey. He has been one of the best county commissioners this county has had in a long, long time, and he's doing his job. He works the whole county. I do not see any of the rest of you out in our area looking at what's going on, so please, thank you, Mr. Harvey.
Thank you, Ms. Sparkman. Okay. Dan Phillips. Following Dan will be Rick Haven. Good morning, Mr. Phillips.
Good morning, sir.
How are you?
And good morning, Commissioners. I, I ask your assistance, and I ask your help. I am confused and dismayed, again, in reading newspaper for the past week, ten days. Very disturbing, the articles that are in the newspaper, front page above the fold. When I look at the map of Putnam County behind you, I see our second greatest resource. Our people are our first resource, but when I see the St. John's River on your symbol up there, and then I think about growing up in Palatka as a little boy, and you remember when the county numbers used to be on license plate?
Twenty-two.
And Putnam County was twenty-two, and that county on the other side of the river, St. John's County, was twenty? And the only thing they had going for them was an old fort and an old theme. And we had the St. John's River, and I don't care what Mr. Knuckle says in the paper, we had some catfisher people put a paper mill together, and we're not just a mill town. Folks, there are, there is more technology in that paper mill today on one paper machine than was in that paper mill for the first ten, fifteen years of its existence. And when we get new employees coming to the paper mill in Palatka, the first thing they want you to know is, "My family and I are gonna be living in Clay County, because we don't like Putnam County." They'll come in and they'll take our jobs, and they'll take our money, but they won't commit to being a part of us and growing with this county. And I think one of the reasons is some of the stuff we see in the newspaper. St. John's County is no longer a place with an old fort, they're building modern airplanes over in St. John's County. We're fussing and feuding how to get along, and whose turn is it to win the bicycle this week? Commissioners, please, let's do the very best we can. You ask us, the voters, and let us ask you, the Commissioners, let's get Putnam County off of the bottom. I appreciate the fact that I- I appreciate the fact that I can see some of you folks in town and we can chat. I appreciate the fact that I can go to Carl Flag and I can say, "Whenever it's convenient, can I ask you a question about what's going on with the landfill?" Carl says, "We're talking right now, ask your question." I said, "Carl, we're here at a pastors' meeting, let me talk to you later." He says, "I got a couple of minutes, we haven't gone into the meeting, what do you want to know?" Thank you for the concern that you have for us. Let's commit to each other, that we're going to do all that we can to make this the best county in Florida. So, when people come to work here, they're not just coming to take our jobs and take some money to Clay County or someplace else. Let's encourage those folks by the way we operate, the way we act, the way we live, the way we govern. Let's encourage them, stay right here, because this is a great place to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips, for your commentary. Very good.
Right.
We have Mr. Rick Haven.
To begin with, I'd like to personally publicly thank Larry Harvey for going to Tallahassee last week and testifying on behalf of the citizens of Putnam County. It might not have ever had to go that far, had we as citizens, when we came to you with what we saw was problems, and you addressed those for us. But for five years, I've been coming here and you guys have ignored almost everything we've ever asked of you. And so, that's what it came to. As far as you being aware of the meeting, that wasn't the point, it was paramount to be in a grand jury hearing, in which law enforcements and citizens make complaints to a grand jury, they decide whether or not there'd be an indictment. That's what we got on Monday, an indictment of you.
This is item 11, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. Flag.
This is item 11 that he's discussing.
Can you save your comments, Mr. Haven?
For 11, certainly.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Ms. Roxanne Weeks. Now, I'll remind future speakers that if this is on the...
Item 11.
Item 11, please hold your comments until that time. We have Ms. Roxanne Weeks. This is audit. Yours is audit also, Roxanne, if you can hold that.
Yes, that's number 11. I'll speak at that time about the audit itself, but I wish to speak now. I want to back up what Mr. Haven said. We've, we've come here quite a few times. We were treated rudely, I've been outright lied to, I've been denied public records request, and it's not just about an audit, it's about many issues. I just really don't understand all the publicity of everyone claiming they don't know anything that's going on, because we know better. We have the emails, that everybody was notified before Thanksgiving of events that were going to occur, and you chose not to respond and have a representative there.
Mr. Chairman, this is about the audit.
This is about the audit.
It's about the general way this, this commission runs. You are not accountable to the citizens.
Let's keep it on those terms and not go to item 11 about the audit.
Okay.
And remember, this is your opinion.
Yes, this is my opinion, from observation at the, my attendance at many of these meetings. We have brought up, animal control is one of my top priorities, that's an absolute failure.
Animal control is doing real well. Under the county leadership for the past year, it has made strides to address the concerns you had. I can brag on animal control for the rest of the day, the things that they've done.
You have done so in Jacksonville media, and the statements you made were false.
I think those were your statements and your media outreach, not this board. If you check the record, it will reflect our work.
Commissioner Libley, you were directly quoted in the Jacksonville Times Union...
That's right.
About kill rates.
That's right.
You said they were taken from 95% to 12%, and that is not true.
Well, according to you, it's not.
No, according to the county statistics they prepare and released by animal control each month.
Well, let's, let's go this, for the last two months, we've had no euthanasia, at all.
Two months out of how many decades?
We're working towards it. It doesn't happen overnight, Ms. Weeks.
Well, I believe, no, it doesn't happen overnight, of course not. Nothing happens overnight, especially a change that, a huge change that is needed out there. What I'm saying is, is that we have brought these issues to you for a very lengthy amount of time. I have come to you with statutes and statistics and numbers. I put things in front of you, I have documents to prove what I say. And I get ignored, I get lied to, the public gets lied to, and that's just no way to conduct this commission. It's not. You work for the taxpayers, you work for us. We pay your salary, your benefits, this big fat retirement you get every year, and you think you don't, you don't have to hold us, you have no accountability to us. And then you act outraged, because we go, we get no satisfaction here, so we go to other sources. You should have, you should have paid attention to your taxpaying constituents in the beginning. Thank you.
We thank you for your commentary. Okay, we have Mr. Robert Bly.
Good morning, Robert Bly, Pomona Park. I want to thank Larry for showing up in Tallahassee with us. We, uh, we went to Tallahassee to try and...
Chairman, point of order, this is number 11, this is about the representation at the auditing committee meeting. I don't understand why that's not clear to the individuals that are coming, we will take that out of the...
Do you have anything else to share, Mr. Bly?
I'll wait till 11, thank you.
Okay, very well. Mr. Kenny Eubanks.
This is item 11.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, that's all the blue cards I have. Public comment, if anybody would like to speak on any subject other than item eight, come forward now.
Item 11.
11, excuse me. Morning, Mr. Spells.
Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
I like to tell Mr. Harvey thanks, I ain't going on another subject, but I still say we got a lot of things around here that needs to be done.
You remind us every two weeks.
Oh yeah, but it ain't nothing getting done. That, that place I was talking about on Cracker Swamp and the excuse I got when I talked on what his name, the other day, he gonna tell me the road was too wet, but you know, if the ditch's starting to dry up and they still got that bad spot on Cracker Swamp, it really don't make no sense. They need to fix the road, Lewis-Bri Road. Y'all need to take time, just like they say, Mr. Harvey about the only one, I can pretty well see, I see Walt every now and then, but the rest of y'all don't see you. You don't ride down some of these roads. Where y'all live at is in pretty good shape, you don't be driving along the bad shoulders of the road. Y'all need to take a little bit of the taxpayer's money and go in these areas and start doing a little more work. And I noticed one thing, in some cases, like last week, you had two wang moors out in Bard, and I don't understand, why would you take two machines in one area when you got other areas that you won't even mow? You're sending the crew out there with weed eaters, they'll cut those tall bushes down and leave them laying along the road, and it looks so tacky. The other day, let me see, about three days ago, Dave was out there in Fager Point, he drove the wang moor all the way out to Fager Point, just cutting one certain area. Why don't you start at the beginning of a road, so by the time you come out of there, you don't have to go back again? And with you being a tire man, Mr. Libley, you ought to know, to just drive this equipment around the county like it's a car or a truck, you imagine how much money the taxpayers have to spend on those tires? And I just don't understand, what can y'all be thinking of, the way y'all actually perform? The Great Oil was out there in Hollister Park, back there behind Queen, I ain't seen a ditch nowhere out there they actually been digging. But you just take the machinery and stash it in certain areas, and soon as somebody asks about getting something done, you've got to wait till the machine come from the other end when it's only parked out there. Thank you.
Thank you for your concerns, Mr. Spells. Anybody else, public comments, morning? Ms. Wanda Ruckelwitz, good morning, ma'am.
Good morning, I'd like to do something joyful. Our children at QI Roberts will be performing their Christmas concert, which is December the 15th. Dinner is at 6:30. There will be chicken, green beans, stuffing, dressing, dessert, roll, drinks. We would love for everybody to come out and see what our youth has to offer to this community. And it's a time of joy for these children. I appreciate that.
I think all of us were out there last Christmas, and I can testify, it was a fantastic show.
Well, it's bigger this time, we had to go to the gymnasium.
Tell us about the kids real quickly, they don't actually have a music curriculum, they do this on their own, and you won't, to the audience...
No, they have a curriculum.
They do?
Yes, they do.
One hour a week, I think?
They have to earn, it's a college credit that they will earn when they're done. They have to know music theory, and if I'm not mistaken, when they take their final test for Cambridge, I believe they have to actually compose.
Well, the level of confidence they had, just in, you know, for no more time than they spent, I think it was an hour a week in an elective or something, that I was really impressed, as you can tell.
Yes, and to let you know also, that they performed at Kiva, the assistants living here for the, for the patients there, they loved it, it was an encore, they wanted them to play over and over again. We also traveled to Penny Farms, and they played for a lady that turned 102 years old. And she invited them to have cake with her to celebrate her big day. And her comment was, "I didn't want to live to 102, but when I heard these children, it made life worth living."
Very nice. Commissioner Harris.
I just wanted to say, um, I'm sorry, Wanda, we really enjoyed the band being in the Crescent City Parade Saturday. How nice.
Our band couldn't make it, the QI Roberts, we're not, we're not a marching band, but we are, we are on our way now to be coming and having a drum line, which will be in your parades. Our children are more symphonic and jazz, so they're more concert type thing. But we will, this next year, have a drum line, and that drum line is really going to rock.
All right.
We're ready for that. Okay? Thank you, Wanda. Thank you.
All right, anybody else, public comments, morning? Mr. Harris, please come up, sir, and then you, sir. Mr. Harris, I think you know the routine, name and address for the record.
Lloyd Harris, Crescent City. I want to make, I'm not looking for sympathy or anything like that, I just want to clear something up. This witch hunt that goes on in this county, I personally find disgusting, and I think it's hard on all of us, that we can't trust one another. But my wife has been a commissioner, she's on her 16th year, and she's certainly aware of the rules. I have been diagnosed with heart failure, I have half of my heart still working, and that is going to shorten my life. None of us know when our time will come. But because of my situation, I have opted to move to Daytona Beach for my retirement. We've been planning on this for a long time, long before I knew how sick I am. Because I want the opportunity to spend some time in Daytona before I die, I've already moved over there. My wife maintains a residence in Putnam County as she should. You don't need to shake your head, I know what I'm saying. Thank you for your help. But anyway, Ms. Weeks, I understand blogged that Nancy Harris has moved to Daytona Beach, and there are many people who would be so happy to believe that. But Nancy Harris has not moved to Daytona Beach. She does come and visit me, and I appreciate it. We've been married 51 years, and we tend to like to be together, probably me more than her. Bless her heart. But I just want to put it to rest, Nancy Harris has not moved to Daytona Beach. She is a commissioner in Putnam County and will follow all the rules of any commissioner that she should follow. And I thank all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris, and we wish you good health in your retirement, sir. Okay, anybody else? Yes, sir, if you would state your name and address for the record?
My name is Calvista Davis, 1101 North County Road, 315 Grandin. This is the first time I ever attended one of these meetings. And the reason why I came is because, because of all the negativism that's been splattered on the Palacada News, almost daily, reference this commission. And sitting there, it immediately became noticeable that this is a house divided. You know, it's okay to disagree, but it's not okay to be divisive. And it just, it really, really doesn't make sense. We supposed to be adults, number one, and more importantly, professionals. I hear all these people talking about Commissioner Harvey, I'm in his district, I've never seen him. I got a ditch across, directly across the road from my house, it hadn't been cleaned in 20 years. Trees are growing up in an outfall ditch. I've never seen him. Have you ever been out there, Mr. Harvey?
Yes, sir, I have.
I've never seen you. But that's neither here nor there. It just seems to me that this commission needs to get together, okay? It, it, to me, it seems as though there are some hidden agendas going around, you know, and it just doesn't make sense to me.
Mr. Davis?
It just doesn't make sense. It appeared to me that a hidden agenda's are being, going around. And I was always told, in my profession, the best way to, a conflict resolution, it should be resolved at the lowest level, okay? Conflict should be revolved, resolved at the lowest level. And to me, going to Tallahassee, you and all your supporters going to Tallahassee, I think was cowardly, in my opinion.
Chairman, point of order. Thank you, Mr. Davis. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Davis, what's your address? Mr. Davis?
1101 North County Road, 315 Grandin.
Thank you, sir. Good, okay, anybody else for public comments, morning, before we move on?
I can go on to Mr. Harris's comments.
No, ma'am, we've, we've had one turn at public comment, that's it. Anybody else on a new subject? All right, seeing none, we're going to move on the agenda. Commissioners, in front of you, you have the consent agenda, any items wishing to pull?
None, Mr. Chairman, item E is going to be discussed a little.
Okay. I have none.
I have none, sir.
So, are you pulling E?
No.
It's up.
No, it's just a discussion, additional remarks by staff.
Okay. Who's presenting? Is that you, Stacy?
No.
Okay, it's Mr. Leary. Mr. Leary, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item E is a change order relating to the water main project down Highway 17, which is being funded by the Florida Department of Transportation. It's the water main relocation that's being, that's necessitated by the widening of Highway 17. Change order has been submitted and prepared by Jones Edmonds. The reason for the change order is to increase the size of the piping at Ivy Road from six inches to eight inches, and to add additional connections to the new water main. The total amount of the change order is $184,867. Mr. Troy Hayes, who is engineer of record with Jones Edmonds, is in attendance, if there are any detailed questions members of the board have relative to the change order.
Okay, commissioners, any questions for the engineer? If you would, come forward, please, sir. We might have some questions. I have a simple one, I'm not an engineer. Why do we need to go from six inches to an eight inch pipe at a cost of $184,000?
That's just a minor part of it, the six...
Minor?
No, that's, the bigger part of it is connecting the 10 additional locations on the other side of the road. So, we're putting a new line across the road and hooking them up where they were all directional drilled previously. This will have a line on both sides of the road, make it much easier for maintenance. That's the vast majority of the cost this change.
Long story short, you're expanding the system.
Yes, we are. Well, that, those 10 locations were already hooked up, but they were all hooked up with directional drills underneath the road, we're getting rid of those directional drills.
Commissioners?
The increasing of the size of the road, actually, during the design on the ASBILTS, it was six inches, when we actually dug it up to move it, it was eight inches, so we have to buy bigger pipe. It was a mistake on the ASBILTS one that was installed in 2007, so that's what has increased the size.
Okay, comments, questions?
Mr. Chairman, that answers my questions about the eight inch pipe, thank you.
Over approval of the consent agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Motion on the floor? Second. And a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
For your good work. Okay, all right, the rest of the consent agenda? I think Carl moved approval.
You did?
Did we do it?
The whole agenda, yeah.
We're fast this morning, sorry about that. Okay, we have a 9:30 certain on the public hearing, I think, item eight. Mr. Manning, is that you, or Mr. Leary?
I'll create segue for this, Mr. Chairman. This is a resolution that is presented on an annual basis to the board at this particular meeting. It is merely an enabling resolution that, if adopted, allows the board to consider the implementation of an MSBU for any number of different...
an MSBU for any number of different, uh, uh, special assessments during the ensuing year, should you choose to do so, should you choose to consider those. As I said, it's an, it's merely an ena- enabling resolution. It's a routine resolution that you have annually considered for many years. It does allow you to, uh, if you enact the, uh, resolution and proceed with, uh, the implementation of an MSBU for any particular purpose, uh, allows you to, uh, utilize the, uh, method of collecting MSBU's on, as part of the, uh, ad valorem tax collections utilizing the services of the tax collector, so.
Mr. Leary, this is, it's the final adoption, isn't it?
Yes, sir, it's a, just a, it's just a singular consideration, yes, sir.
Commissioners, questions, comments?
Mr. Chairman, I, I do have some questions on this.
Floor's yours.
What, what I don't like about the resolution is it names things that we could be doing in the future, and it seems to me like they won't be coming back before the board in order to do that. I realize that this is statute and all that, but, and the statute allows us to use MSBU's for all these other road paving, street lighting, subdivision walls. But I think our citizens would feel a lot more at ease if we did not include all the things that we weren't doing and just include the things that we already are doing. That was my question.
Let's, uh, let Mr. Manning, if we could, so, or Mr. Leary. This is a scope of work that we perform throughout the entire year.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's an enabling resolution, so if you don't include any of these things in this resolution, then you can't consider them at all in the, in the ensuing year. And any, any one of these things, if you decide to proceed with them, will come back before you, that all, you have to enact all MSBU's. So, uh, you know, if you don't, if you don't include any one of the possibilities in the resolution, then you can't consider it at all during the year.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Flack?
Ms. Shannon is here. We throw out acronyms all day, and many times our citizens are not privy to understanding the complexity of municipal service benefit units. And, uh, Shannon, if you would, please just come and, and give an overview, because at the end of the day, uh, the conspiracy theory can certainly overwhelm us and make us all think, uh, that we're trying to do something that certainly is not, uh, in this particular resolution. Uh, we're simply wanting to have a vehicle that if you need to drive it, it's full of gas, and you can get in it and drive it. Uh, everything will have to be properly vetted with public hearings, uh, properly advertised and announced. So please drill down on the MSBU concept for the benefit of all.
Excuse me, Mr. Commissioner Flack, name for the Tony's record, please.
Shannon Burge, MSBU Assessment Coordinator for Putnam County.
Very well.
Um, Municipal Service Benefit Unit is the, is what the acronym stands for. And it is a method for where the county can do, provide services to the citizens that they normally couldn't do with the regular tax base. Uh, this resolution is a formality, like it was, Mr. Leary indicated. We do it every year, we've done it every year since nineteen ninety-four. And it allows us to do MSBU's or consider MSBU's for the future year. If we do not include what is all in there, then we can't look at it, like Mr. Leary said. It does not, um, mandate that we do any MSBU. We've done this, like I said, every year. We have not considered an MSBU since two thousand and eight. But we do this resolution in case we need to do them. Um, it's just a, pretty much a formality required by Florida statutes. There's, uh, a couple MSBU's that we may be looking at that may need, that are currently active, that we may need to increase their assessments, consider increasing their assessments this year. If you choose not to do it at this time, then we will not be able to do that this year. So this is just a formality. Um, there's no, nothing on the board that I know of other than looking at increasing a few assessments that were currently
Mr. Harvey?
In place.
I'm satisfied with the answers I got, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Shannon. This is a public hearing, and at this time I will open it up to the public. Anyone wishing to comment on this, yes, sir, come forward and, uh, state your name and address for the record, please, sir, and welcome, Mr. Swin.
Ken Swin, one twenty-six Elderberry Lane, Palatka. I have had some conversation within the last week with some commissioners. I will not mention who, how many, but more than one.
Not me.
And...
I'm just making the record show that you have not spoken with me, you can continue.
Would you like me to name names? I mean, last time I did that, you got upset because I was picking on somebody, but I'm not gonna pick on anybody.
All right, a little order here. Mr. Swin, if you could get to your point, I'll ask for ex parte, um, communications at the end of your comments or in the public hearing part, and we'll, we'll know the answer to that.
I asked the question, and I'm assuming this is the public hearing that we had the conversation about. Uh, I asked the question about a fire tax that you were thinking about implementing, similar to what the city implemented. And the answer that I received was to enable the county to generate revenue from people that do not pay taxes. Now, if this is not the public hearing that I was asking the questions about, I have no... I mean, you're saying this is something that you do every year for MSBU's. Now, as Shannon says, an MSBU would be like if I wanted my road paved and everybody wanted to pave it, we'd vote on it and you'd have a special assessment for us. It's not a special assessment for the entire county, is that correct?
That's correct, and this document is setting up the method to collect for that unit. And it would be you residents, like you just said.
Only MSBU's, nothing about special assessments, no, no fire tax, no county fees, no nothing.
I'll let Mr. Manning answer that.
This, this really just allows the county a method of collecting special assessments or MSTUs or MSBU's. It doesn't authorize any new taxes, it doesn't set any new taxes. It just provides a vehicle to collect those that do exist, or those that at some point in the following year, if there was to be something proposed, there would be a hearing on, um, and if it would be approved. This just allows those to be collected, those to be placed upon the tax bill for collection.
All right, well, let's, let's get real specific. Is there anything to do with this, what we're hearing today, to do with if you decided in your mind, all seven, eight, ten, whatever it is, who makes these decisions, that we were going to have a, we need a special assessment, fee, tax, whatever you want to call it, there's, all those mean the same thing to me, it's a tax. You're taking money out of my pocket, putting it into the county coffers, and then you spend it any way you want to. Is there anything with this, what you want to do today to vote on, that represents a fire tax fee that you're trying to implement into the future, as of next year, as you say, where the entire county will be assessed a fee in addition to what the small fire tax fee that we have now, everybody has them on their ad valorem?
No.
Ms. Burge?
If you look at the MSBU resolution, fire services are listed in there. The board would have to hold public hearings in the future if they were to do that. They would have to adopt a, a separate ordinance, creating a fire tax district boundary, the boundaries for it, and they would have to adopt initial assessment resolutions and do the notification process. And this just allows the county to use the tax bill method of collecting if they were to do an MSBU in the future this year.
So you're saying it, it is possible to use this method to collect a tax or fee or a special assessment, whatever you want to call it, from every person that's in this room, for every piece of property in the county? And...
This allows them to use the uniform method of collecting, which is the tax bill, for those services listed in the MSBU and fire services is listed in the MSBU, yes.
Then I have one other question. I have been out of the country for the last month or better. And I probably, I, I attend very few of your workshop meetings where you get together and you decide. Has there been a workshop, since you all go to them, on a special fee, tax assessment for all these vacant lots and all the residential properties in Putnam County? To increase the money coming into your coffers? Now, that would be a simple yes or no. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
You've had that?
Yes, we explore all options.
So what I was told basically is true, and forget about all this answer that you've just given me.
Well, let's stop for a minute, you're, you're asking about this method and what this document does.
I'm actually asking about wanting to raise some taxes. I mean, you just got your penny sales tax that you said you needed or the county was gonna fall off the face of the earth. You got that, you got that money.
Did you understand, Mrs. Burge, as far as a hearing on each of these individually would be required before they, if anything was ever...
My concern is you've met, you've already met, you've already discussed, I mean, I was told this, you've already discussed, and you're planning on coming in with a tax, fee, special assessment, or whatever, for every county resident, and the purpose is to generate income? And your answer was yes. Now, am I incorrect in that?
No, you're, you're...
I'm right on, right on.
Let's let Mr. Flack have the floor.
This resolution, key words, simply enabled us...
Sir, I'm not interested in the resolution.
Okay, we're not raising taxes today, end of statement.
I, I'm not talking about today, my question was in the future. You want to, I mean, what I was told, you plan on doing it for next year.
That's not what this resolution is doing, if that's what your question is.
No, my question, your, my question is point-blank clear, are you planning on raising taxes?
Okay, my answer is point-blank blank clear that we have already set the assessments for this year, so I don't know where you're going with this.
Well, well, you know, it's amazing how I can ask a question, and I'm sure I can, I can ask somebody else the same question, and I'll get an answer, yes or no.
No.
Chip, Chip already said yes.
Everybody please say no, this is not raising taxes.
No, I didn't say this was.
I said yes to what the document allows to do.
You had the public, you had the public hearing. That's on this. I said your workshop. You had a workshop about raising taxes, using a special assessment, a fee, a tax, a fire tax, whatever method you want to call it. And the answer to that question was point-blank yes, you had that meeting.
Mr. Swin?
Yes or no?
Mr. Swin?
Yes, sir.
We have to provide, by statute, fire service for every citizen in this county. And in any way to fund it, we have to discuss. So we all know that you're the king of the tax deed sales, you have more lots than anybody in the county, so let's get right to the point. Is your taxes going up? I do not know that at all. We did not have a discussion about raising taxes on lots or whatever for this year, but...
Not for this year, I, I'm talking about next year.
It could be for the year after and the year after, I don't care, but we have to explore all parameters to provide fire service. So, sir, there's no end to your questioning, but this is personal with you.
It's very personal to me and as well as everybody else that's gonna pay these fees to you.
Well, let's not be selfish here. I think we answered your question adequately, unless counsel's got something else to add to it, I'm done.
No, I have nothing further. Um, as stated, this, this does just provide the vehicle for collecting, um, established, duly established, legally established taxes and special assessments. It allows the tax bills to reflect those.
Now you're back on this public hearing, I'm asking about the workshop. Did you attend the workshop that we talked about?
I, I attend all workshops, but this public hearing is, is what I'm assuming your, your comments are for.
My comments are, as Chip says, extremely personal, because I own lots of property. Not so many vacant lots anymore, but a lot of houses.
Well, I heard you say that your comments no longer reflect comments related to the public hearing on adoption of this resolution.
Thank you, counsel.
No, that's correct, sir. I mean, you've answered that, that's just the method to, to collect. My question is, are you planning on, and the answer was yes?
No.
No, you're, you're not planning on it.
I, if you took that from what I said, it has to do with this resolution, not the future, as far as you're suggesting.
I'm talking about your workshop, and you just, you've already answered that thing twice, you, you better listen to your tape.
Mr. Chairman, point of, point of order, point of order. This is a public hearing relative to resolution electing to use the uniform method of collecting non-ad valorem assessments.
Do you have anything else to add to it, Mr. Swin?
No, sir, you, you, you've answered quite clearly, Mr. Live.
Thank you, sir, for your comment.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Castleberry?
Since we've had such a discussion on this, to be crystal clear, this resolution relates to assessments only, it does not have anything to do with ad valorem taxes or municipal serving taxing units.
Can you now? Yes.
This resolution, just to be technical, since we've got so many people taking notes, et cetera, this resolution has nothing to do with taxes. It has only to do with special assessments, non-ad valorem special assessments, nothing to do with taxes or MSTUs.
Thank you for that clarification, Mr. Castleberry. Okay, anybody else from the public? Uh, yes, Miss, we have Mr. Craig Sharar, uh, name for the record, please, sir.
Craig Sharar, one forty-seven Pine Tree Road, East Palatka.
Mr. Sharar, before we start, please try to find new ground, let's not hash over the, Mr. Swin just went through, thank you.
Oh, okay, yeah. Well, first of all, I have to do one correction. He doesn't own the most vacant lots in Putnam County, an outfit called Verona does. And second of all, he doesn't even own the most area in Putnam County, an outfit called Plum Creek does.
Thank you for that correction, sir.
Okay.
But he owns a lot of them, doesn't he?
It is possible to operate government without ad valorem taxes. What you do is this. I provide this service, so I set up a fee. Sheriff's Department, I provide this service, so I set up a fee. Fire, I provide this service, so I set up a fee. Hospitals, I provide this service, it's called a library, fee, 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 fee. Government is supposed to function off its ad valorem taxes, that's your budget. Three of you run a business. That's the way you get your revenue, by selling your product, your ad valorem is the way you sell your product. This resolution is an admission of a gross inability to live within your budget. Now, you said this absolutely has to do with taking the people of Putnam County, turning them upside down, and shaking more money out of them. Everything in here is supposed to be done by the Better Place Plan. Apparently that wasn't enough money, so let's get some more. It isn't about exploring anything, it's about we gotta do this because we can't grab you by the ankles and shake you upside down until we say we can grab you by the ankles and shake you upside down. Now, giving money to governments like giving heroin to an addict. Y'all got a two-million-dollar building over there, you can't figure out what to do with it, but we're gonna give you more money. You've got millions of dollars that you tied up in a thousand acres that you don't do anything with, but we're gonna give you more money. This is to explore all possibilities, you know what, there's one thing that this does not explore, and that you people specifically, and government in general never explores, which is making government efficient. You've got people driving vehicles out there, are blessed firemen. Guess what? They treat those vehicles like they're the privately owned vehicles. They go to the volunteer fire departments, hop in those things, and go all over town. I've seen ambulances at auto parts store. Every morning, the people in East Palatka hop in that ambulance on our time and go get breakfast at five miles to the gallon.
You could, Mr. Sharar, kind of keep it on the subject.
Well, you know what it is on the subject, the thing is this, before you start shaking us upside down, why don't you do that? You know how many mobile command vehicles the sheriff has?
Ask the sheriff, Mr. Sharar.
Well, you know what, you ought to know that, because you know what, one of those vehicles costs us over half a million dollars. And the rest of us have to live in a budget. When I sell my rats, I only get the money from selling my rats. I can't go out there and shake people for more walking down the street. Well, if I wasted half a million dollars buying a command vehicle that has never, ever been used, why didn't we take, you know what, there's people in this county gotta eat every single day.
Mr. Sharar, I gotta stop you, this is not the sheriff's department you're addressing, please.
No, it's your money. No, it's your money, you know what, and that's what the problem is. Every time we talk about something specific, you say that has nothing to do with the issue.
Well, it doesn't, please, get on subject.
It's government money, it's government money, it's government money, this is for the government to get money. If you waste the money that you have, then you got to turn people upside down and shake more money out of them so you have something else to waste. Why don't we sit here, we've got two command vehicles, why don't you sell one of them that we never, ever use and take that money and put it into revenue?
I'm going to ask you one more time to get on subject, or you're going to have to leave the podium.
Aren't we talking about?
Please, this is a public hearing, we're going to conduct it as one.
Okay.
Please, Craig.
Well, you know what, this, well, then how about this? Why don't you go through this list and strike some things out so that at least we know you aren't going to be wasting our money on it in the future? You know, this is the.
Look, you're welcome in the workshop anytime to discuss this, and we will listen. But you're up here airing it out on something that's just not related, it's a public hearing, and we need efficiency in this meeting today. Please get on subject.
Is this dealing with government spending money?
It's, get on subject, you know what you're doing.
Well, that's what it says.
I don't have to tell you, you served as a commissioner before, get on subject.
I am on subject, it says imposing a special assessment for fire service. We want a special assessment to spend money on fire service, we want a special assessment to spend money on ferry service, that's spending money. Well, if you spend your money buying stupid things, then you got to go out and get more money to spend it on the things that you should spend it on.
Please wrap it up, Mr. Sharar.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, anybody else from the public? Three minutes, and three minutes only.
Hey, Sparkman, I just want to tell you, I live on 315.
Address, please, Ms. Sparkman, for the record.
I live between two MSBU's, I see the parents all the time. I brought you the pictures of the snakes when they weren't cleaning, they just took 50 loads of dirt back then, but why, I want to be able to go back and tell the people, are they going to be taxed more in their MSBU taxes? Because if they're going to be, then give them the proper things all year long instead of waiting till the roads are so bad that it takes 50 great big loads of dirt to fix it. If we can't have a decent MSBU coordinator on Flamingo's side, then it's up to you five to please do something about it. So I'm going to have to be able to go back now and tell these people, because Interlakenstites have a different contractor than we do on our side. So are they going to have their taxes raised to pay for this, that's all I want to know.
That's up to your MSBU unit, you have a group, and you're commissioner, they're all involved.
I'm not, I'm just telling you, I talk to the parents, I see it, because on both of my sides, thanks to you, we do have the county maintain the first set from 315 back because of the dirt and the area.
And Ms. Sparkman, you get to choose that level of service, to be fair, I mean, do you, or do you not? You really do.
I get excellent service, but I'm worried about the people behind me, I don't want to see any more snakes come out in front of those little kids. So please make your coordinators do their jobs or something, please.
We hear you, thank you. Okay, anybody else from the public, Mr. Haven?
Just one question. If you don't pass this, you can't tax us? Isn't that what it comes down to?
That's a question for legal, look that way.
Okay, but you got, this is, what we've, we've come to you.
It's a legal document and a required hearing, you're right, Mr. Haven.
Okay, but we've come to you and asked you not to do things, or to do things in the past, and at least four of you are going to go ahead and vote for this with a room full of peoples that don't want you to.
We have to run the county, Mr. Haven. Thank you.
But you waste a lot of money.
Okay, we'll bring those out, bit by bit, yes, ma'am? Name and address for the record, please, ma'am.
My name is Jean Moyer, and I live in Inilocken. Couple weeks ago, I was going to bring a friend back into the estates, and a fire, a rescue vehicle was behind me with the lights running. So I pulled over by the high school and let them go by. And as I went into the estates, I was behind that emergency vehicle, again, still lights running. Was it going to an emergency call? No, it was going to the fire chief's home. Needless to say, didn't surprise me in Putnam County.
Thank you for your comments, Mrs. Moyer. Okay, anybody else, public comment for this hearing? Seeing none, we will close the hearing for Commissioner deliberation, please, Commissioner, deliberate.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, start off, Commissioner Harvey.
Go ahead, Ms. Harris was first.
I just wanted to explain a little bit on how we have used this tool.
That would be fine.
A particular subdivision will come in and ask us that they would like to have their road paved, and it's just one road going in, and it serves the people in that subdivision. And they know we don't have money to pave all of the roads, so they ask for an MSBU, and they have meetings, we go out in the community and meet with them, and they vote to tax themselves to pay for the paving of that road.
Or not.
Or not. And then they come to us, and we have a public hearing, we take comments, and we decide, and it gives us a chance to provide services that normally we may never get that road paved, and it only benefits the people that go in on that one road. That's how we've been using MSBU's for a long time. So this is just a tool that we use to do something that we might not otherwise be able to do, and the people that live in that particular subdivision that requested it appreciate it, and they're glad to have that opportunity. So this isn't any particular tax, it's just a method that we have that we can do some things that we might not be able to do when the people request it. So I, I just wanted to put it in perspective, it's not a diabolical scheme to raise taxes, it's an opportunity to provide services that the people in that particular area want.
Okay, Commissioner Harvey.
Mr. Chairman, this is directed to our attorney, page 57, Mr. Manning. The bottom paragraph starts, "The county hereby determines that a levy of assessment is needed to fund the cost of," and it lists all those. "Is there a way to build a consensus here to say could be needed if the B O C C has public hearings and choose to fund the cost of?" Maybe that will give our citizens the satisfaction to know that the assessment today is not needed, but it could be needed in the future. Is that a, is that a consensus? Could we do something in that nature? And not destroy the document?
Yeah. I, I don't see any reason why it couldn't reflect if the board wishes to state that the county has, well, I think it needs to cover two things. It, it needs to cover that the county has determined that the levy of assessments is needed, because in many situations, that determination has been made already.
All right.
So I, I think it could state that the county has determined and may determine in the future that the levy of assessment, levy of assessments is needed to fund the cost of, et cetera, et cetera.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Castleberry, yes?
This resolution is speaking to the future, it.
Mr. Castleberry, get that mic a little closer, please, sir.
This resolution is speaking to the future, it is talking about allowing special assessments to be collected commencing in November 2016. So Mr. Harvey's suggestion on the bottom of page 57 could clearly say the levy of special assessments may be needed to fund the cost of, and the follows the laundry list, things that we have already determined that we needed to levy special assessments for have already been done in prior documents and prior resolutions. So this is looking forward, and it would not hurt at all to have that language reflect that special assessments may be needed to cover it.
Well, I.
And actually, that's better language, anyway.
Thank you. Although, on those assessments, this document serves the purpose of allowing collection of those that have already been established.
I don't think so, that's not what it says, it says on page, at the top of page 57, is this method will allow special assessments to be collected annually commencing in November 2016, and I'm assuming, Shannon, that our prior resolutions have already authorized collection on the tax bill for prior years.
Well, my concern would be.
In other words, if we didn't have, if we didn't pass this resolution today, I don't think it would affect prior MSBU's that have been established.
No, it wouldn't affect prior MSBU's unless we're looking at any assessments.
Agreed.
So your opinion is, Russ, that this would allow continued collection on next year's tax bill of MSBU's that were established in prior years?
Yes.
Yes, in the summer time.
Shannon, you got to, you got to come forward for the record, Tony's batting eyes at you.
By statute, if there's no changes, we adopt annual resolutions, so I think that takes care of what your concern is. Am I correct, Russ?
Yeah, I, I think this resolution is strictly looking forward to things that we may do in the future, or may not do.
Yeah, for new MSBU's.
So Mr. Castleberry, would you read how it probably needs to be written legally, with my suggestions?
I would say in that last paragraph that it would, the lead in would be the levy of assessments may be needed to fund the cost of, and then list the various items that are already listed there.
Could we add in with the B O C C at public hearings?
Well, you can add that in, but that's required by law anyway.
Okay, all right, well, just, okay, well, thank you, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I entertain a motion to adopt a resolution with revised language in the last paragraph of the levy of the assessment may be needed to fund the cost of those that are listed.
Motion on the floor? A second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries. At this time, we're going to take a five-minute recess, and we will be back right on time.
Mr. Vice Chairman? I've got five minutes for us. He didn't hear you.
Mr. Sammons, if you can make your, your right.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
The first case is 2000.
Let me reconvene, reconvening, hang on, the Board of Commission meeting Tuesday, December 8th, 2015, Commissioner Harris.
We're glad to see you back in action.
Glad to be back.
Yes.
You're feeling well, yeah.
You're walking, Russ and Mr. Sammons both had knee replacements, and Mr. Sammons is walking better than you, Russ, we have to congratulate him.
They got the surgeons.
He's had both his done, though, I haven't had that yet, so I'm working that way.
What you got for us this morning?
I got three fine reductions, the first one is case 2007-01578, Donna Jokewith is the owner, 142 Roland. The property was first seen on December 6th, 2007, there was an unpermitted pole barn on the property, staff spoke with the owner, who indicated he would get a permit. He submitted plans for the structure, but there were several issues. The permit process went into a standstill, while Mr. Groh, the owner, made the necessary corrections. It was taking a long time, so the code enforcement staff sent out a notice of hearing to send the, on April 11th, 2008, to go to the July special magistrate hearing if things weren't resolved. And the case ended up going to the special magistrate on July 17th, 2008, and he found the property being violation, and gave the owner until September 2nd, 2008, to come into compliance, or $25 a day fine would commence, $100 administrative fee was also assessed. Mr. Groh continued to attempt to get the plans right for the pole barn, but wasn't providing the necessary information. He ended up actually going to prison, and things definitely went to a standstill then. Site inspection on February 11th, 2013, indicated the pole barn had been removed. The property went up for a tax deed sale on February 11th, 2015, Ms. Jokewith purchased the property at the tax deed sale. She requested a fine reduction hearing, the special magistrate heard her request for a fine reduction request on November 19th, 2015, and recommended that the $40,725 fine be reduced to $533 that was paid within 45 days of Board of County Commission reaction. The special magistrate and Ms. Jokewith had a fairly lengthy discussion as to whether she should be required to pay any amount or not. Mr. Bradley indicated that he didn't think the case that she was presenting was apropos to her situation. She did get the property back, and the special magistrate recommendation was that the board accept $533 in lieu of the $40,725 fine that be paid within 45 days for the reasons given by staff, Ms. Jokewith is here today.
She is?
Yes.
Go ahead.
One question, I just wanted you to clarify that when Mr. Groh went to prison, that it had nothing to do with the permit?
No.
Just wanted to clarify.
No, we don't have that power, but, no, he went to prison on another issue.
Okay, the applicant is, or the Ms. Jokewith is here this morning?
He's right behind me.
She wished, yes. Good morning, ma'am.
Morning, how you doing?
I'm doing good, thank you.
Okay, I've only got one other copy here, if you'd like this, my argument was, they had agreed to drop the lien to, I believe it was $533. However, this was a homestead property, okay? This lien was put on the property long before the man went to prison, I mean, we're talking a couple of years, this was his homestead property. He apparently had built some garage or something without permits, and then he tore them down, a couple of years before he ever went to prison, okay? They placed a lien on the property for the, you know, the code violations, he corrected those code violations, okay? The Florida law does not allow them to put liens on that property, being it was a homestead. And I've got case law here, which was Volusia County, case law, that you cannot put a lien on a homestead property, it cannot stick. You can put the lien against the individual, but not the property itself. So being that this was homestead property, the lien should never be attached to the property in the first place, therefore, there should not even have been a lien.
Okay. Counsel?
Well, I, what I've heard from staff is that the magistrate considered that argument and found that it wasn't applicable to this case. As an aside, this isn't, it wasn't an action to foreclose on the lien, which I, I'm not familiar with the case, I haven't, it wasn't presented to me before this, but, but this isn't a situation where they're foreclosing on a homestead. And I believe that's, that's the matter that's being referred to. But again, from what I, testimony of staff is that that was considered by the magistrate at the time. The magistrate made the recommendation of the reduction.
Mr. Manning, Mr. Castleberry, correct me if I'm wrong, but in the state of Florida, a lien can be placed on a homesteaded property, but you can't take that property for that, for that lien.
That's what I mean by, it wasn't a foreclosure action, that, you're correct, you can't foreclose on a homestead property, but liens can be placed.
Ms. Jokewith?
I've got to the contrary to that, Volusia County, and I think this is my last copy I have here, but Volusia County, actually, this was challenged in court. And the appellate court actually ruled that the lien may not be placed on the property, and the property may be sold, and the lien would go with the owner of the property and not the new owner of the property, if the property was homestead at the time the lien was placed on it. Would you like to see my?
No, ma'am, that's not for this board at this time, it's, Mr. Manning, I'll look for your direction on how to proceed from here.
Well, this is a recommendation based upon a request for a reduction. It did go to the special magistrate, the special magistrate did have a quasi judicial hearing on the matter, and they are making their recommendation of reduction to this amount. As, as I stated, this testimony has revealed that this was considered by the special magistrate, and the amount of the recommendation is as stated in the, in the materials.
Mr. Flag?
Ms. Jokewith, did you not know this was happening on this property before you purchased? purchased?
I did not purchase this property, I foreclosed on this property.
Okay, you, you foreclosed on the property, but you are, you were aware of all of the code violations?
Not when we started foreclosure, but I had a mortgage that was going to go bad, so I foreclosed, like any business person would do.
Okay, so as a business person, we had a forty thousand seven hundred and twenty-five dollar, uh, fine that would have been assessed, and that's been, uh, drastically reduced to only five hundred and thirty-three dollars, but you feel that you should pay zero, is that what your position is?
That's correct, that was the appellate court has decided on.
I'm not talking about the appellate court, I'm talking about you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so you feel you owe zero to the county?
That's correct.
Many of these citizens that are gathered here now are, you know, raising issues of how the county is not handling the business right. We have administrative costs, research, inspections, certified letters, and all of those things that happen, uh, over a timeframe of six years and three months, and our staff, again, sometime are the unsung heroes in this county, because when folk work for government, if they catch one person that they think is a slacker, they pretty much paint everyone with one brush. I think it's very fair that the hearing that you participated in with the special magistrate, um, because you're obviously not gonna be satisfied unless it's reduced to zero, from what I'm understanding, correct?
Well, I appreciate their offer of five thirty-three, but statute still provides that it should be zero.
Okay, well, the magistrate, who again is the expert there, and our counsel, uh, disagrees with what you have there, and I think you can take that up in the proper forum, I entertain a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we accept the recommendation of the special magistrate.
Motion, motion on floor? Okay, Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you, um, Mr. Sammons, is there any, um, avenue for us to notify the lien holders when the, in this case, it was a private mortgage? Is there any, um, burden on our part as a county to notify her of, of, or anybody, of when this starts to happen and increase like it was?
We record the lien-
But I mean, do-
Come to the mic.
He needs to go to the mic. Please repeat that, Mr. Sammons on the mic.
We record a lien, uh, in the public records, and if we do know of a mortgage company, uh, we often send notices to them also.
I mean, we're not privy to those documents of the private deal between a mortgage company and the buyer, or in this case, a private mortgage company.
Right, not always.
So, we're not privy to that, okay? Mr. Hammond?
Mr. Hammond?
If I may, um, let's not confuse, these are two different issues, she's painting it as a mortgage foreclosure, as if she is the holder of a mortgage and foreclosing. That is not the case here, this is a tax deed, this went through a tax deed sale.
No, it did not, sir.
John?
I foreclosed on a mortgage on this, when it went up for tax deed sale, I paid the taxes, and then foreclosed on my mortgage.
Okay, we will have, we will have to do some more research on that, that's not what I understood, however, that doesn't change the fact that our, when we give notice, we always give notice to the property owners, we do not give notice necessarily to a mortgage holder.
Well, there'd be no way for us to know who the mortgage hold, well, I guess maybe we, if they recorded the mortgage, we might, but mortgages change often, so-
Yes, but our, our liens are recorded.
I understand, thank you, sir.
Okay, so Brian, I'll hold it before he leaves, so are you wanting to take this back to staff level for further review?
Uh, again, I don't see the need to do that.
I just wanna make sure.
Uh, the magistrate has been extremely lenient here.
It's a long period of time.
I believe this was a forty thousand dollar lien, uh, it has gone through the process under chapter one sixty-two, and we have certainly met those requirements.
Mr. Chairman, I restate my motion.
Okay, motion on the floor, second, we have a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of staff recommendations, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close like sign, it carries. Thank you.
Uh, the next case is two thousand twelve zero three three eight, uh, one twenty-one Turkey Trot Road, Flor home, Erneston, Maryland Caban, um, I apologize if I said that wrong. Uh, the property was first seen on April twenty-third, two thousand twelve, there was an unpermitted mobile home on the lot, which already had a mobile home on it, staff called the person believed to have placed the mobile home there, he denied placing it there, but indicated that an ex-employee might have done so. Uh, the property owner came into the office on April twenty-fourth, two thousand twelve, and started the paperwork for a billing permit, and applied for temporary usement for a medical hardship, uh, placement of a mobile home. On, uh, June twentieth, two thousand twelve, they decided to, uh, get a demolition permit that happened to be issued for the mobile home. Uh, the demolition permit, uh, nothing happened on it, it expired on March eighth, two thousand thirteen, a notice of violation in hearing was sent out on Mar- May third, two thousand thirteen, special magistrate heard the case on July eighteen, two thousand thirteen, and found the property to be in violation, and gave the owner until September sixteen, two thousand thirteen, to bring the property into compliance, or twenty-five dollar a day fine would commence, a hundred dollar administrative fee was also assessed. Uh, the owners paid the administrative fee on September sixteen, two thousand thirteen, the special magistrate heard the case again on June eighteenth, two thousand fourteen, and found the property to be in violation, in order for the lien to be recorded, the property was deemed to be in compliance on September eighteen, two thousand fifteen, the special magistrate heard the request for a fine reduction on November nineteenth, two thousand fifteen, and he recommended that the two thousand four hundred twenty-five dollar fine be reduced to nine hundred sixteen, sixteen dollars, if paid within sixty days of B O C C action, and that amount covers the cost of, uh, the county's, uh, expense on this case. I'm not, I, I don't know what the Cabans look like, I wasn't at the hearing, so I don't know if they're here or not.
Mr. Sammons, are the Cavens with us? Yes, if y'all would come, make your way to the podium, and I need your name and address for the record, please. Good morning.
Good morning, Ernesto Caban, one twenty-one B, Turkey Trot Road.
Mm-hmm.
Um, four years ago, um, I bought a, a double wide, and, um, I went and I found a, a licensed, um, mover, and, um, I bought a lemon, 'cause, uh, he didn't have a title, um, I paid over six thousand dollars for everything, and, um, I, I didn't know, you know, I, I thought, you know, you go find a guy, he does all the job, the work for you, and, he didn't pull no permits out, so I had to go do it myself, um, it took me over a year to get a title, um, lots of money, over five hundred dollars, just trying to do everything I could possibly do, just to get everything right the right way. After it was all done, it's, uh, said and done, it was two weeks before they were putting a lien on my mother's property, 'cause it's technically her property, but I've been there since, you know, five years old, on this ten acres, so, um, I thought that, you know, if they put the lien on my mom's property, she'll lose it, so I said, well, let's just demolish the place and start all over again, so, I lost everything, and I got nothing, and I'm just here to pay the fines, and if possible, not pay anything at all.
Okay, uh, commissioners, questions for Mr. Caban? Mr. Caban, what's, you have a home on the property now?
No, I am-
It's vacant lot?
Yes, it's, I cleared everything out, well, no, there's, she lives on the property on her own, you know, her own place, but I had my own, on the five, other five acres, it's, it's nothing there now, I just, I'm s- I've been saving up for twelve months to get a new place, and I just had a baby girl Saturday, so I'm just, just trying to get back on my feet.
Mr. Sammons, you were, you've done a site visit?
I, I have not, because of my, the issue, I have not been out there. I'm just taking a visit, going for some feeding.
Okay, all right, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman-
We got, take your time, if you need to go, Mr. Harris?
I think that, um, for him to buy a mobile home and then have all that trouble to get the title, that it's unusual circumstances, and I would like to see us reduce that fine by half, instead of charging the full nine sixteen.
Okay.
So, I'd like to make a motion that we reduce the fee in half.
What about the time parameters, Commissioner Harris?
Can you pay that within sixty days?
I can pay it right now.
Okay, then I would-
That's a good answer.
Yes, it is.
I'm not today.
I make a motion that we-
Elaborate on that.
Do the recommended action.
I just wanna get it clear so I can live back on there, I just, I'm trying to save up money just to get another double wide on there the right way, you know, and within the next couple of months.
We appreciate that. Mr. Caban, we're sorry for your troubles you had, we really are, and we're trying to be fair here. We have a motion on the floor for reducing the fine.
Say four fifty, it'd be four fifty-eight, reduce the fee to four fifty-eight.
We have a second.
Can we clarify the, the timeframe for payment of the motion?
Yes, and the time, uh, recommended was sixty days, let's just leave that as it is.
I believe I heard now.
Now, yeah, I'll pay it right now.
You said now, but it oughta be within the sixty days.
If you could get with staff, Mr. Sammons, and, and-
Yes, sir.
Whatever.
Second.
Okay, we have a second, any further discussion on this? Uh, here, Mr. Chairman? Yes, Mr. Palsir?
In the past, um, we've always just tried to cover at least cost, you know, what the office has absolutely in it bare bones, nothing extra, and, you know, we're gonna break that now.
Well, how do we arrive to the nine sixteen, staff?
That was the cost.
That's what I thought, so we're cutting cost in half, Commissioner Palsir? Because it is unfortunate situation, which I really believe was-
What was your, your deal with your arm, like you held up, I didn't see that?
I, my, had a, I was just adding that I had a daughter Saturday, just to try to sweeten the deal, that's all.
Oh, oh, oh. You delivered a daughter?
Yeah.
That touches my heart.
All right. Need a job, I'm looking for a salesman.
Call the question. Mr. Caban, Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas to you.
Okay, motion on the floor, we got a second, any further discussion?
Question.
Yes, call the question, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close like sign, thank y'all.
Thank you very much.
Uh, the last case we have is two thousand thirteen zero zero three seventy-five, Charles Myers and Jennifer Lambeth, one oh two Park Drive in Satsuma. Uh, property was first seen on July twenty-fourth, two thousand thirteen, there was a significant care premises issue, and house seemed to have been abandoned, a courtesy notice had been sent out, but staff heard that the, that there was a foreclosure going on, uh, staff monitored the foreclosure, the property during the foreclosure, uh, process, uh, we checked the records, uh, down the road, and found that the foreclosure process had been dismissed on October third, two thousand thirteen, and we sent another courtesy notice on the property, uh, nothing happened, the notice of violation in hearing was sent out on the March eleventh, two thousand fourteen, uh, the case went before the special magistrate on May fifteenth, two thousand fourteen, and he found the property being violation, and gave the owner until June twenty-ninth, two thousand fourteen, to bring the property into compliance, or twenty-five dollar fine, a day fine would commence, the property stayed in violation, went back before the special magistrate in September nineteenth, two thousand fourteen, he agreed that the violation still existed, and ordered the county to record the lien. The property went, uh, to a tax deed sale on March eleventh, two thousand fifteen, uh, staff received a letter from the new owner on April ninth, two thousand fifteen, wanting to have, uh, the fines released, the new owner hired, uh, contractors to begin the property into compliance, the property was found to be in compliance on September twenty-fifth, two thousand fifteen, uh, the owners requested a fine reduction hearing, the special magistrate heard the request for a fine reduction hearing on November nineteenth, two thousand fifteen, and recommended that the county accept five hundred dollars in lieu of the ten thousand six hundred dollar fine if it's paid within forty-five days, uh, of the Board of County Commission reaction, uh, the reasons are, the new owners paid the back taxes, they hired contractors, uh, to bring the property into compliance, and make it an asset to the county again, uh, the reason, the recommendation is below the cost incurred by the fine reduction worksheet, is because the cost incurred by the new owners to bring the property into compliance, and the fact that they were not the owners during the period of time when it was in violation. Any questions?
Okay, you have the folks with us today?
I'm not sure.
Lambeth, Mr. Miz, there is Mr. Lambeth? Good morning, sir.
Yes.
Press the board.
Well, I bought the house not knowing that there was any liens on it, and I was told later on there was liens, and I came before the judge here, and he negotiated it down to five hundred dollars.
Okay, are you satisfied with that amount, Mr. Lambeth?
Well, it cost, it cost me two thousand dollars to, to go ahead and clean up the yard with the dead trees and everything.
Yes, sir, but, um- That's your due diligence, with all respect, um, this, we have a fixed cost, you know, to, to do this, and we went from ten thousand six hundred dollars to five hundred, I think you negotiated a pretty good deal with the special magistrate.
So move.
Okay, we have a-
I won't disagree with that.
Sir?
I don't disagree with that.
Okay, all right, so we're in agreement, um, commissioners?
To move.
All right, we have a motion on the floor?
Second.
We have a second, any further discussion?
Just to clarify, you moved that we accept the recommendation.
Staff recommendation, that's right. Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close like sign, if you have your wish.
When do I have to pay the bill?
January twenty-second.
By January twenty-second.
January twenty-second.
Forty-five days.
Thank you.
We're at ten o'clock certain.
Okay, Brian? Mr. Cato? Let's keep it rolling along here.
She needs a timeout, I'm back.
Timeout. Okay, wait, we need a timeout, we have a technical difficulty, okay, let's take five minutes, we'll be back at ten fifty-eight.
Turn the air up, dang, it's cold.
Okay, I want to reconvene, the, uh, commissioner, Board of Commissioners meeting Tuesday, December eighth, two thousand fifteen, uh, we're gonna go into Planning and Development Services, Mr. Cato, the floor's yours, sir.
Yes, sir, this is Harris Burns Cato, Planning Development Services, uh, representing case fifteen, uh, zero zero nine, uh, the applicant is RS Enterprise LLC, the applicant proposes to rezone the subject parcel from C two to C three, the parcel is located on thirty-five twenty, Krill Avenue, Placa, Florida, the lot size is, uh, point nine two acres, so we're gonna go into the maps here, here's an aerial, you can see the subject parcel, it's, it's, uh, highlighted in blue, it's a triangle parcel, um, it currently has a auto mechanic shop located on the premise. Closer, yes, sir, that better? Um, to the west of the parcel, or, excuse me, to the east of the parcel is a baseball field, to the north of the parcel is a, uh, you know, a track, track and field, track field, and then also the, uh, Placa High School, to the northwest is, uh, a residence, and there's also some commercial along that strip corridor of the, uh, of, uh, State Road twenty, and, oh, excuse me, to the south is a church. Uh, you can see the future land use is urban service, and to the south of the subject parcel is, uh, urban reserve, uh, the zoning districts, uh, immediate, uh, to the northwest is residential property R two, um, the subject parcel is C two, and then there's, you can also see some C two on the strip of State Road twenty. So, when staff is reviewing, uh, rezonings, we look for a comprehensive plan consistency, uh, the future land use for the subject parcel is urban, urban service, urban service future land use is designated for parcels or for places that have urban, urban infrastructure currently, or plan to have urban infrastructure within the next ten years, uh, commercial uses are allowed within the urban service future land use, uh, as long as they adhere to certain, to the commercial use policy, and also don't collect on a strip pattern, however, in this particular case, the commercial use already exists on the subject parcel, it's just an intensification of the commercial use. Um, the, when we go into the commercial policy, it cites some locational standards, locational standards are that it's, uh, has direct access to a paved collector or higher, in this particular case, we have a State Road twenty, which is a principal arterial that is higher than a collector, and then also, that doesn't, uh, introduce non-residential vehicular traffic in established neighborhoods, uh, state, again, the parcel has direct access to State Road twenty, and there will be no, there will be no introduction of non-residential vehicular traffic in established neighborhood, so it meets those requirements. Then we go to the zoning district, is consistent with the urban service future land use, uh, commercial three, and then the zone, or the, uh, the uses in the commercial or C three district are, as follows on the screen, the major difference is that, uh, between C two and C three is that highway oriented is included on there, and we can go into that if anybody has any questions about it. Um, the neighbors to the northwest parcel have expressed some, uh, concern that their residential use is in conflict with the, uh, commercial use that exists in the subject parcel, so I want to bring up some of the buffering and screening requirements that we, that the Land Development Code has, uh, these buffering and screening requirements will be required at the time that the, that the, uh, owner comes before final development review with staff, uh, after, after, after the rezoning is, uh, allowed, or is approved, if it's approved, excuse me. So, the residential use counts as an intensity of one, and the commercial three, or the C three use counts as a intensity of five, which puts us on this table as a twenty- intensity of five, which puts us on this table as a twenty B. What the, what does that mean? Well, it means that there's a twenty-foot buffer on the northwest property line, so anything within that twenty-foot buffer, no structure, no use can happen. Then, it also must meet the sta, the screening standards of standard B, which are, uh, row of evergreen canopy trees, which are not less than eight feet within a certain, uh, uh, distance of the property line and a certain distance from each other. And then it also must meet, one, the screening requirements of standard A. Uh, part A of standard A is not applicable because of being met with standard B, and then it must meet either B, C, or D, which is a masonry wall, a solid wood fence, a berm, which is six feet in height, or a lawn, or some kind of, uh, amenity that's identified in E. Staff's recommendation is that the proposed rezoning is consistent with the comprehensive plan and Land Development Code. Staff recommends approval, and we'll answer any questions.
Okay, Commissioner, before we speak, we need to disclose our ex parte communications, if you have any, starting with District One.
Okay, I have none, but I have a comment.
Let me go ahead and get this done.
District Three, I have none.
District Five, I have.
I have, and District Four.
And District Two has none. Thank you. Commissioner Harris.
Okay, um, I was-
If I could interrupt, um, Commissioner Powell, sir, did you say you have?
Have.
You have?
I have had some.
Those should be disclosed at this point, because this is quasi judicial.
Mr. Traxler, the owner and his mother of, uh, the northwest parcel.
I know. Can you provide some information on what the-
Um, he just called and asked me, uh, some, um, exactly what, what was gonna happen and what their feelings were, as the property owner was there. They've been there since nineteen sixty-five, and, um, uh, they expressed, I think he's gonna come up and speak here in a little bit, but they expressed that they wanted to be good neighbors, but they just wanted some, uh, they want to be protected that in the event that, uh, the owner of this property sold it, and, uh, could it, the next thing be a sky rise foot in there, you know, he just wanted to be protected, uh, in that way.
Thank you.
Is that clear enough?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Harris.
Um, I just wanted to clarify, in the discussion, the neighbors did discuss, um, the intensity of the use, and that, um, the owner said that he would put in a fence, and that there would be, uh, no intensity or another building going in. Can those things, well, I guess you said that part of the code requires those things? Or requires the fencing?
It, it requires into, so let's go back to standard A, standard A and standard B. Uh, it requires definitively that the row of evergreen canopy trees, um, are there. And then, the, the applicant has the ability to select one of the four options that are in screening standard A. So, it could be a masonry wall, a solid wood fence, a berm, or standard D, which is actually kind of a-
Okay, so, that will be taken care of automatically?
Correct, yes. Be, be, because of the change of the use of the site, they have to adhere to the Land Development Code. This is not the only, only thing that they're gonna have to adhere to in final development review, but this is one of the, one of the, uh, standards that they have, they're gonna have to adhere to, and the reason staff brought it up is because it was an issue that was brought up in the planning commission.
Okay, and Mr. Traxler will be part, he will be able to sit in on that meeting and express his feelings?
No, the, there will, that will be a preliminary review hearing-
All right.
Or, excuse me, not hearing, meeting.
Right.
Um, we, we, this project does not meet the threshold foregoing before that, however, we have spoken with Mr. Traxler, and we'll give him the ability to, uh, review the plans before we, uh, approve them, and then if he objects to them, he can go through the proper course, whatever that may be.
All right, thank you.
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Um, Mr. Cadel, you mentioned in your comments that you needed our approval, and then to go back to do what Commissioner Harris is saying, to talk about this fence area, isn't that kind of putting the cart before the horse on this, or-
The way-
Shouldn't we have that done prior, and then come to us with the completed package?
So, really two issues. First, rezoning cannot be approved based on any condition. The rezoning is approved, that you, you approve for the, the proposed zoning district. Um, the way that it works is that after, after said approval for the new use, then the applicant is required to come into compliance with the Land Development Code. And the Land Development Code states that they have to do X, X, Y, and Z to meet standards, and that's the way that the system works currently.
Thank you, thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, anyone else? Let's hear it from Mr. Traxler. Yes, Mr. Traxler, or Mrs. Traxler? Good morning, sir.
John Traxler, thirty-five thirty, Krill Avenue, Palaca, Florida. Uh, appreciate y'all's time seeing us. Uh, wanna reiterate real briefly, we were never here to create our neighbor a problem. We're not anti-commerce, anything we can do to help the county, and let's all make some money, I'm all for it. But, uh, we're concerned about intensification of commercial use there. We wanna maintain the quality of life that my family has enjoyed there over the years, and, uh, so it's twofold. One is, is this language and verbiage, is it statutory through the state? Or is this a, uh, county level ordinance that's requiring the, uh, things to be done? And also forbids them to get a special use? Because ideally, we wanted them to get a special usage, because we don't wanna hurt the man. He's been a great neighbor, and we're good neighbors to him. We want him to do his business, but we're concerned about letting the genie out of the bottle by going to an intensified commercial status. And once that's done, who knows what's gonna happen? And we don't wanna bear the brunt of having to come back down here and get into some long, uh, you know, back and forth about what's gonna happen. And we do have issues there that can be worked out in a different forum than here today, but just to briefly touch on them. Uh, presently, they do have a fence there that has worked well over the years for security. And that has enabled us to not have a lot of people and foot pedestrian traffic in there around our place. So, it's basically secure like it is, but, uh, we're very concerned, if it's a car lot, that's gonna increase pedestrian traffic, and it's gonna cause, uh, overflow areas for where these people are gonna park, and then, uh, indigence. We've had trouble with that over the years on the old Watson property, further to the west, where the doctor put the place in now, and that all worked out fine. But, we, it's just a security issue. We've, we've had a lot of, of that, and also, if we kid a fence or a barrier put up in agreement, we need to be able to work that out where my mother can come out of the driveway and see the, to get on the road and things of that nature. And I'm talking about the presence of vehicles for sale being close to the road. So, it's a multifaceted thing. We want, we want to maintain our privacy and quality of life there, but we also wanna be able to get in and out of there safely. She's at ninety-two years old and does real well. And, uh, but at the same, by the same token, I wanna make sure that I'm clear that we're not trying to hurt this man. We just, like Mr. Harvey alluded to, we, we wish we'd get a plan in concrete in advance, and know what we're gonna do. And, uh, also, once again, like I started off, I'm not sure where this verbiage changed. During the planning meeting, which was, you know, kinda quick, one of them made the comment that, well, we can't give a special usage for this car lot without going to the next zoning level. Well, and, and my clarity that I was looking for there, is that a county thing, or is that a statutory thing through the state?
Mr. Cadel? I think you just looked your answer up.
Yeah, um, in C-two, there is not an option for auto sales, which is considered highway oriented in the, in the Land Development Code in, in the C-two district. Uh, highway oriented is provided as a standard use within the C-three district. So, it cannot be provided for as a special use permit. Currently, the, uh, subject parcel has a C, C-two zoning district with a special use for the vehicle service that it currently has.
Mr. Cadel, does, um, in that zoning, the amount of cars he could put on, I think it said point nine two acres, I mean-
He, well, he's, he's fairly limited by the size of the property, he has to provide parking, interior landscaping, so on and so forth. I mean, the standards kind of really prevent him from being able to, uh, turn it into the Wonder World Auto Mall, or something of that nature.
I, I think what, and I'm just gonna guess here, I'm, Mr. Traxler's concern is that if he's got wall-to-wall cars on there, and people wanna stop and look at that car, they're gonna be parking in his yard, walking over there to look at that car, and I'm sure that's not what Mr. Traxler wants.
Well, and, and I could understand Mr. Traxler's concern with that. They have to provide the appropriate amount of parking to the Land Development Code for not only the cars that they are selling, but the, the people that will be coming on premise to, to view the cars, the employees that will be there, not only for the auto sales, but also the auto mechanic shop. Uh, and, and then, like I said, also, um, there, there's visibility triangles that they have to adhere to, and so on and so forth. The code really does provide for, uh, the protection of, of the, of the surrounding parcels, regardless of whether they were residential or commercial or can, so.
Commissioner Harris?
Um, Mr. Cadel, to answer Mr. Traxler's question-
Yes, ma'am.
This is a county ordinance? This is a county ordinance, is that correct?
Which, which part? The, are we talking about the, the Land Development Code standards, yes, and, well, yes, on both sides. The standards, yes, and also the, the zoning districts are also county as well.
Okay.
I apologize for the confusion.
That answered my question, Ted.
Okay. Mr. Traxler, I have, I have one for you. Um, you're, as far as a buffer's concerned, and your mother's sightline, uh, is the fence you mentioned adequate? You seem to be happy with that, or you prefer a vegetative buffer? What's your feelings there?
The fence that's there was put up by, uh, Suburban Propane or Greens Fuel, one of them, that was LP Gas Company there prior to. And, uh, it works real good. Uh, as far as the security part, we would like to see, I believe my mother's indication was that she would like to see, uh, more of a privacy, you know, visual privacy fence-
Mm-hmm.
Or maybe upgrade that one, or whatever, without too much detriment to our neighbor. Uh, but there, again, it's a, it all works together. We'd like to maintain our privacy and the security. You know, if you take that fence down and were to put up a row of trees, like he alluded to in that comprehensive use plan, then, you know, we're gonna have people wandering through the car lot and wandering onto our property at all various times, and-
That's why I'm asking.
I hate to sound cynical about it, but, you know, we have a lot of that up and down twenty there. We have poor lighting, and the way we're set up now, we have the high school perimeter fence, we have the fence with our neighbor, and so we're, we're pretty secure, but we could lose all that quickly if we're not careful, so.
Mr. Cadel, his guar, his concerns, where do we guarantee them?
Well, I, I can't guarantee anything except for the fact that we'll go through the prop, the appropriate process and we'll meet the standards. Now, uh, speaking about the row of trees, I do understand that there's trees already over on the property line. Some of those can be, uh, be counted towards the landscaping requirements through a certain process, um, and then, uh-
Well, let's stop right there for a minute.
Go ahead.
He's not happy with trees, though. He would like to keep pedestrians from wandering in and out of his personal property.
He would like, he would like the fence. What, you know, that, that part is, you know, again, the, the Land Development Code states the different options within standard A, and, you know, I assume, and I've spoken with the, uh, with the agent, with the applicant and the agent prior to this, and they, they are willing to work with the Traxlers as well, but I'll let them speak on behalf of their own opinion.
Okay, uh, Mr. Douglas, you wanna approach? I mean, it will go, right. Mr. Hammond?
Just a, an embellishment on that. The, again, to reiterate, uh, whenever you're making a rezoning decision, rezonings cannot be conditional, so we can't make conditions on it, uh, that would ensure what you're asking for. Um, the issues that Harris is enumerating are in existing code, they are required. Now, which, um, which options are actually chosen for that buffer is kind of left under the code up to the property owner, as to how to accomplish that. That could involve the removal of that fence, but again, we have mechanisms for leaving the existing fence and then just vegetating out from that. We do have that ability under the code.
He's also asking for future protections in case the land changes hands.
And see, we don't really have that ability with a standard zoning.
Okay.
Uh, if we were going into a PUD, then the board would have basically a document that is special zoning for that site, in a PUD. But in the standard zoning code, you know, if the board changes the zoning, or if he uses the zoning he's in, he's stuck to that set of requirements and the development requirements that apply to that.
And he's relying on your good relationship with your neighbor, John, is what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. Douglas, good morning, sir.
Good morning. Charlie Douglas, six oh one, I'm sorry.
Before we start, Commissioner-
I have a question for Mr. Hammond, please, Mr. Douglas, thank you. Mr. Hammond, based on what you just said, then how do our citizens have a voice here to come before us and say, you know, a fence would be nice, a privacy fence would be nice, we don't want vegetation, how do we give them that voice-
You don't.
To represent-
You don't.
A pub.
Under current code, you do not.
You have to go to a plan unit.
Code is what the code. If, if, if there's something you want changed in code, you tell us you want it changed, and we will propose something to you. But what's in code is what's in code. I can't, I can't circumvent your code. I can only administer your code.
Look at our code and give our citizens that voice, that they need to be heard, because they come here expecting to be heard.
Not every property, when it's developed, goes through Development Review Committee. So, not everything goes through that process. Even that is not a public hear, well, excuse me, it is a public hearing, but it is a staff board that's just making comments based on the code. And highlighting those issues that must be followed in the development of that property. But again, we're following code. We're not making rules, we're not really approving something, we're just saying whether it is according to code, or it is not.
If I could clarify, and that would be the next step in the process, this is merely a rezoning request, it is not a request for any particular type of development. I understand that, you know, there, there's an idea in mind, but there's no guarantee that the property owner actually is going to move forward with that particular. They may change their mind, wanna do something different. This is just a request to rezone, so that certain allowable uses, um, are available to that property within the new zoning district that they're requesting. Thank you, sir.
Let's hear it from Mr. Douglas. Thank you for waiting, sir.
Good morning. Charlie Douglas, six oh one, St. John's Avenue. Uh, we encourage the commission to approve, uh, the, the staff's recommendation, and also the unanimous decision of the planning commission. Uh, we understand the concerns of, uh, the neighboring parcels, and we encourage, uh, our, um, our representatives of the RNS Enterprises LLC to do everything possible that they can to be the good neighbors that, um, that they wish to be. And, uh, that includes the fence. Uh, we've heard on both sides, uh, the fence exists, it's been there for a long time. There is vegetation that has grown up through the fence, it provides a nice buffer. There are a few gaps in the fence, uh, but we've talked to staff about putting in some additional landscaping, uh, so that, uh, the, the visual, uh, line of sight will be blocked, uh, but also to help with what has been a concern, uh, from the neighbors, um, in this process, which is noise. Um, we do not believe that this is going to provide, um, or be the source of additional noise, uh, any more than what the softball games, uh, currently have, or, uh, the band practice, or the dogs that are in the area that, uh, bark a lot. Uh, so, th- this is not going to be a use that will, will amplify, um, too, too many sounds that come from, um, general automobile repair. Uh, even the, the air compressor used for the tools is inside a building, it's not outside. Uh, and, uh, the existing use now is, uh, general auto repair, and there have been no complaints, uh, for about eleven years. So, this is not gonna provide any more sound, uh, than would, um, otherwise exist, uh, as it currently stands. As far as pedestrian traffic goes, this is not a big lot, it's, it's less than an acre. Um, so, like someone had mentioned, it's not gonna be auto world. Um, every night, the automobiles that are for sale will be behind a locked gate. This is not an automobile lot where people, after hours, will be able to come and look around and peek through the windows of cars for sale. Uh, so this is a small, um, operation, and there will not be any, um, more concerns than the C-three zoning that is on the other side of the neighbors, uh, from where RNS Enterprises, uh, currently exists. So, with that, I, I urge the board to, um, approve of the recommendations from staff, and also approve the unanimous decision of the planning commission. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Douglas? I was unclear, did not understand that these cars are gonna be kept behind a locked gate throughout the day and night, and people would...
At night, yes, sir.
So those cars, I guess, they're not gonna be displayed right out on Highway 20, 24/7?
That is my understanding. And Mr. Goldberg is here, the owner of the property, and if you have questions of him, he is available as well.
Please.
Good morning, Mr. Goldberg.
Good morning, gentlemen. My name is Paul Goldberg, and I'm one of the owners of 3520 Curl Avenue. The issues about the traffic after hours, and there is some groups of people that do travel up and down the sidewalks that, I guess, you can, they're not the best people in the world we see walking around there, but I also want to protect the vehicles, so the vehicles during working hours will be out front, certainly, for people to see, but for my own security, as well as, it'll also help people wandering into the parking lot at night, it's gonna be behind the lock gate. There is a fully lock gate, it's quite, it's actually quite large. So my goal is to really have about 20, maybe 25 cars, and that's not, that's probably, that's my goal, probably gonna start with about 10 cars, but really, 20, 25 cars is what I'm looking to have there. During the day, they'll be outside, and in the evenings, they'll be locked in the gate for the security of the cars, but I think it'll also help, you know, after-hours people coming into the lot, to answer that question.
That cleared that up. Mr. Traxler may be more informed, or yourself. The current fence that's there, that is there, it doesn't come all the way to the sidewalk, does it?
It doesn't. It's probably maybe, I would say probably about 40 feet before the sidewalk. It's fully enclosed. He also, my lawyer also said that there's shrubbery that's really throughout that fence, except for a couple of gaps. I'd be happy to fill that with plants or things of that nature, would be easier than taking that fence down, where there's so much in it, it would be quite a task, actually.
How about the extension of that fence going toward the sidewalk to give privacy?
In that area, in that area, there's actually several trees that are there that actually you almost can't see through, it's so thick. The combination of little palm trees, and I don't know the types of trees, but there's many trees in that little 40-foot gap that almost prevent you from even seeing through that, and that's gonna stay there.
Okay.
You have to see it, but there's a whole small section of heavy brush.
I've seen it.
Okay.
Mr. Traxler, does that seem satisfactory with you, that type of a buffer for your vision there?
I don't have an argument at all with the keeping the trees and things of that nature, and I think we agree on a lot of things here. We'd like to see an increase maybe in the existing fence, like you're talking about, or whatever. I think those things could be worked out. I think, my hope here today was to clarify whether this was statutory with the state or whether it was with the county level. If it's at the county level, then we shouldn't be having these kind of problems, we should work these things out, and we should induce commerce and accommodate residential folks like us by giving a man a special usage or whatever, instead of all this rigmarole of letting the genie out of the bottle, and the next man that comes in there, he may not be a nice neighbor, he may want to build more structures and intensify that property next to us, and we need some protection there. And we have been good neighbors, and we have endured a lot of noise, and we have had dogs on that property since I was a small child and all sorts of formattos. So we would appreciate being able to work together and appreciate, we would urge you to not let that genie out of the bottle.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Flag was next, and Commissioner Harris.
First of all, I'd like to compliment Mr. Traxler and his mother and the family, because not only do we have the code, but we have cooperation and communication there that helps this board tremendously, when we have willing neighbors that are able to work through the various things that we have to deal with. So I wanted to definitely compliment you on your attitude in being a willing neighbor to cooperate. The minutes from the planning commission indicated that the project would need to go through the DRC, the Developmental Review Committee, but through further research, that is not the case.
Yes, through initial interactions with the applicant, it was stated because of the nature of the project that it wouldn't have to go through preliminary review. At the point in time, I had handed the case off to John Sammons, and John Sammons handled the case, and we made, staff made a mistake. Now, here's how it works. All Class 3 development has to go through preliminary review, however, Class 2 projects, which the applicant's project is a Class 2 project, does not have to go through preliminary review, however, staff can make the discussionary opinion that it does need to go through preliminary review based on some criteria. Now, in this particular situation, the use is changing, however, the applicant hasn't proposed any building expansion of the actual structure. So therefore, staff felt, because basically it was kind of an alteration of some landscaping, you know, parking and the buffering and screening amenities, that it wasn't of the level to meet that level of review, and it just needed to go for a final development review to through the process.
Thank you so much. Mr. Chairman, also, just for point of reference, in the planning commission minutes, there is an exchange of the type of company. Part of the minutes show Amoco, which is certainly a petroleum company, and others say Amco. We know it's Amco, but if we could, let's make sure that before the planning commission approved those minutes, that they get the Amoco correction. Thank you.
Duly noted. Commissioner Harris?
I just wanted to clarify, Mr. Traxler, we don't have the option of doing a special exception where we could put in different things. And because it is a county ordinance, does not mean that things are waived and we can require something we can't. We either have to go with what we've got or not. So I didn't want you to feel because it's a local ordinance that it's, you know, can be changed.
Yes, ma'am, I appreciate your comment on that, and I'm sure you ought to well versed in that as opposed to me. I just, I did follow that line of thinking. In other words, I'm still not clear as to why we can't do that. In other words, is the comprehensive use verbiage and things of that nature, is that something that's dictated to us that cannot be altered under any circumstances because that statutory language that comes from the state, or is that county ordinance language that we don't alter because we don't want to, or is that?
Well, what we have to do, if we pass this today, we have to go with the language the way that it is. We've talked about looking at doing something in the future, but if we approve it today, it has to be with what's there.
Yes, ma'am, and that's my concern. There again, I don't want to cause any undue stress for my neighbor, I want him to be able to progress, but I sure hate to see that approved here today, and we go to, from a light commercial to a commercial and intensify or have the ability to intensify, you know, we, you know, once that's increased and once it's changed, you're well aware of what it'll take to, we're not gonna go backwards.
That's right.
We're not gonna come back and say, let's go back to light commercial.
That's right.
So the man has a light commercial business that's not, you know, we can all live with, but when we change that today, I don't know what's gonna happen down the road.
That's right.
And that's what we're concerned with, so I appreciate your time.
I didn't want to sugarcoat it, I wanted you to know what it is.
I thank you for that, and I'm trying to not sugarcoat it as well.
Well, is there anyone else that wants to speak? It's a public hearing.
Yes, that's true. Are you finished? Is everybody okay?
I'm finished.
All right, let's open it up to the public. Anybody wishing to speak on this subject, come forward now. Okay, hearing or seeing none, we'll close the public portion of the hearing, and we'll go back to Commissioner Deliverance.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. I agree with Mr. Traxler about, you know, the genie out of the bottle aspect, and I don't know if that's something we can fix in the future, Mr. Manning, is that something that can be rewritten or changed that? I know what he's concerned, he's happy with their relationship. If it stays the car lot and that's all it ever is, I get the impression that they're both gonna be happy. But if Mr. Goldberg sells, what's he gonna get?
Well, again, this is a zoning, you know, request to rezone. Really, the only consideration is whether or not it is consistent with the future land use and the comprehensive plan, which it's, the recommendation here is that it is consistent, and you can't make conditional zoning. Now, in the future, you could certainly, you can always make changes to, you know, the comprehensive plan and future land use. Obviously, there's a process for doing that, but as far as specifics related to development, again, that is something that is addressed during, you know, the development process as opposed to the rezoning. Your hands are tied, I guess, is really a good way to say that, as long as it's consistent with the future land use and the comprehensive plan, and the property owner has a right to have their property rezoned consistent with that, with that plan.
Is there any provision that this could be changed and fixed before this goes forward so that it protects Mr. Traxler and Mr. Goldberg, so he gets what he wants to do as a car lot?
What, specifically, what provision?
To limit it to what it is and not whatever that possibility of that zoning would change, does it allow for a skyscraper, or what does it allow? What, give me some examples of what could go there.
So...
It would be a drastic jump above a car lot.
Right. So as staff stated before, the above are the uses that are allowed, but mainly, the main difference is highway-oriented, so let me go into what highway-oriented allows. Vehicle sales, rental, and parking, which is what we're talking about today. Boat sales, repairs, storage, and service. Heavy vehicle sales, service, and storage. Manufacture home sales, vehicle repair, vehicle service. Truck stop, truck terminal, bus terminal, car wash, mini warehouse, portable building sales, superstores, and mall and shopping centers. Of course, you know, as I say, all these things, some of those are not applicable for the property because of the size and nature of the property and what would take to develop it, so we have to remember that there are some development constraints because of the fact that they have to meet the standards of the Land Development Code.
So with him with .92 acres, is that right?
Excuse me?
Him having .92 acres, is that their correct size of the property?
Yes.
That would extremely limit anything that could ever be put there other than what it is.
Correct. Well, I mean, you know, it obviously can change into something different, but as we were stating before, it's, you know, it's almost at its capacity currently, and intensifying the use even further would be very difficult for the owner or any future potential owner.
Would that limit an amount of acreage?
Right.
Not even a full acre. Anyone else?
So will that the recommended action be approved?
A motion on floor?
I'm just not comfortable with that totally, I'm just... Okay.
Mr. Attorney, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
When we have the specifications outlined in the law, this case has to be decided based on the law. The rezoning ordinances, am I on point, or am I missing something?
No, you are correct. As I said, if it's consistent with the comprehensive plan, the future land use element, Land Development Code, the applicant is entitled to have his property rezoned.
Mr. Traxler, this is under an acre. Does that satisfy you enough that it limits anything commercial greatly? It really does. You know, I understand everything all your Commissioners are saying, but this particular piece regulates itself. I mean, I'm sure we can agree to that, but I want to hear from Mr. Traxler.
Absolutely.
Mr. Lava, I appreciate what you're saying, and the only thing I would say to that is, there again, we don't want to hold this man up, but, you know, can we not table this until such time that you can review this special usage or some type of verbiage change there to allow him to do what he needs to do without jeopardizing our investments since 1965 on that property and our way of life, et cetera, et cetera?
It was explained earlier how we can do that. You don't have a second unless somebody's offering one to the motion, so it will die for a lack of second, and we'll move forward in that fashion if you choose so.
Well...
Yes, Commissioner Harris?
Mr. Chairman, what we're going to do, if we don't vote yes for it, is open it up to a lawsuit. We can be challenged, and we will probably lose because it is in agreement with the comp plan. So I'm going to go ahead and second that motion.
Mr. Manning, is that correct?
That's correct.
That's very possible.
Well, I see a lot of head nodding here with respect to lawsuits, and I just want to go on the record to say that my family is not, we're not lawsuit-type people, but this is a prime example of this innuendo of what we're talking about. We don't want, you know, because he's a good man, and we recognize Mr. Douglas as well or whatever, but, you know, this is what we're talking about. We don't know what we're gonna get next time, but I understand you have to protect yourself, so we're all gonna do what we have to do, and if you have to do it, you have to do it, but be, I just want to make sure, and I think y'all do understand where I'm coming from, but this is not a good situation. And I'd also like to go on the record at this time about that, is just because Duval County or Clay County or St. Johns County or anybody else has a comprehensive use plan that they put forth, that doesn't necessarily mean that Putnam County needs to jump on board and change our local ordinances or verbiage to accommodate that. You know, I don't, because this situation is gonna put us in a bind now, you know?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Thank you for your time.
Okay. Mr. Traxler, again, thank you, and Mr. Goldberg, and all concerned. Let's be real, a person can purchase property next to anyone if they can afford it, so we can look through the telescope of time and prophesy and predict who our neighbor will be in the future, and it could really frighten all of us as to who could be our potential neighbor. I think what you all have right now, you need to celebrate, you need to pray for his success so that he's there indefinitely, mama and you and the family coexist, and I think that there are times that we look way off and don't celebrate what we have before us now, and I think that if you all will continue the relationship that you have now, make each day count, maximize the moments, and before any of this other stuff happened, I believe we have a way to hear you if, you know, property is changing hands. I'm very confident with a .92-acre piece of property that a prudent businessperson is not going to come in there knowing that they're going to fail miserably before the Planning and Development Services Group. So I believe that your safety net, your fears, do have a safety net, nothing is guaranteed, not even us being alive tomorrow, but I think that if you will focus on what we have now and keep us abreast there, and I believe that the loyalty of even their representative agent says a lot, too, about what's happening. So I really believe that it's in the best interests of all concerned for us to be in compliance with the law. We empathize and are very sensitive, Mr. Traxler, to what you are saying, and it's not just falling on ears, we're very empathetic to that, but I just believe that the law is what it is, and the rezoning certainly should be based upon the law and not a reaction to what might happen in the future.
Mr. Chairman? Wait, well, Mr. Chairman? Yes, Mr. Traxler? Can you hear me? Here you are.
Uh, this is just like any other rezoning, we get hung up on the particular use that somebody may or may not be planning to do. What you should be doing today is looking at our rules, looking at staff's recommendation, and they're telling you that this property is appropriately, is appropriate to rezone it to this rezoning category, which you have established under that zoning category, various types of uses. In fact, an applicant could come before you and seek to have a piece of property rezoned and tell you what I intend to do with it is absolutely none of your business. What I intend to do with it is do one of the things that you said I can do in that zoning category. So we always get hung up in what the, and we make a mistake in getting hung up on what is planned for one reason, it's sort of irrelevant, and number two, it can always change. He could change his mind next week and say, you know, I thought about the car thing and...
He could change his mind next week and say, you know, I thought about the car thing and I've changed my mind. So we, we get too tied up in what plans are rather than is, according to our rules, is this, is this property eligible for the type of uses that you've established and staff has told you? Yes, it is.
Thank you, Council. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Commissioner Harris, further discussion?
Okay. I just wanted to, Harris, if I could ask you, you mentioned that they do not propose to add a building. But if they did, that the requirements would be stepped up? Is that correct?
I, I'm not understanding completely.
Okay. This particular applicant is not adding a building.
Correct.
But if someone else bought it and they wanted to add a building, do the requirements get stepped up?
Oh, you, you're, you're asking whether we would go to preliminary review at that point? Yes, it would. And I'll tell you why. At that point, a lot of things change when they decide to expand the building to the site. So we, we start having stormwater issues and a lot of other issues that pertain to the property that kind of elevates the necessity for more plans and more scrutiny.
Okay. So it gives a little more protection to the neighbor. That's what's my point.
Yes, ma'am.
Question?
Okay. Any further discussion?
Call for the question.
Okay. Questions being called. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose like sign.
Nope.
Aye.
All right. Let's do a raise of hands. All in favor signify by raising your hand. Oppose like sign. Let the record reflect. Okay, that's it. Thank you. Thank you all. Okay. Mr. Cato.
Okay. This is case R fifteen dash eleven. The applicant is Circle Investments LLC. The applicant is requesting a zoning map amendment from IL, which is industrial light to commercial, C two for one parcel amounting in one point seven eight acres located along US seventeen, south of Crescent City. So we're going to look at the maps here and this parcel is located in the southern portion of the county. You can see it outlined in blue. The area is largely vacant. There is a industrial firm plant that's located to the west of the property. And there's a lot of agricultural activities going to the southeast. This, the future land use for the subject parcel is a rural center. In fact, the seventeen and Clifton Road intersection is, has a rural center applied to each quadrant over there. And then the subject parcel is industrial light along with that whole southwest quadrant. While the predominant land use out there is agriculture and there's a PED to the northeast. So again, when staff is looking at, when staff is reviewing an applicant's rezoning application, we're, we're reviewing for comprehensive plan consistency. In this particular case, the future land use is rural center. Commercial buildings are allowed within a rural center as long as they meet the certain commercial use policies dictated by the statute before you. When we look into it again, direct access to paved roadway, collector or higher, in this case, we have US seventeen, which is a principal arterial, which meets that standard. And then furthermore, does it introduce non-residential vehicular traffic into an established neighborhood? In this particular case, has direct access to Clifton Road and also US seventeen. It does not introduce non-residential vehicular traffic into established neighborhoods, so it meets both of those standards. The zoning district C two, is it applicable for the future land use? Yes, it is. It has a rural center, future land use designation identified in red. The staff recommendation is that the proposed rezoning is consistent with the comprehensive plan and Land Development Code. Staff recommends approval.
Okay. Questions, comments, commissioners? Hearing, what's that?
Ex parte.
Oh, ex parte communications. Thank you.
I've had none.
I've had none.
None?
None.
None, sir.
Okay. We'll open it up to the public. Anybody wishing to speak from the public?
The agent would like to speak.
Okay. Mr. Ryan Thompson, I believe, if you would state your name and address for the record through the microphone. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Ryan Thompson, one three two Northwest Seventy-Sixth Drive, Gansville, Florida, three two six oh seven. Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Mr. Mertz Cato, appreciate your present, thorough presentation. I just have a few slides to share with you to read into the record for the application. R fifteen dash zero one one. So our intent, our request is to amend the zoning map from light industrial to light and commercial on one point seven acres in Crescent City on the southwest corner of Clifton Road and US seventeen. We submitted the application in August and received a recommendation approval from staff. And then again, from the Planning Commission, unanimous approval on November twelfth. And we're before you this morning. And hope to receive approval from you as well. So again, this is an aerial map of the site. It's one point seven acres on the southwest corner of Clifton Road and US seventeen. The existing future land use is RC rural center. The existing zoning is light and industrial and we're requesting light commercial. The desired use, retail sales is allowed in the C two district. C two is permitted within the RC flu category. The comprehensive plan allows up to thirty-five percent of the rural cluster to be zoned commercial before requiring a comprehensive plan amendment for the future land use map to be amended to commercial. With approval of this application, only three point three percent of the rural cluster will be commercial. That's my presentation. Thank you.
Okay. Questions, comments for Mr. Thompson?
So you for this project?
I apologize if I failed to mention before, I'm a planner with CHW. We're the agent for the applicant.
We could tell you knew your way around the ropes.
Very well. Mr. Chairman, does the public hearing close?
No. Just going to open now. Anybody from public? Seeing none, hearing none, we'll close the public portion of the hearing and go to Commissioner deliberation.
So move our recommended approval of the proposed rezoning?
Second.
Got two seconds. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed like signs. Mr. Brown? Okay, let's take three minutes and we'll be back. I'm trying to move this agenda. I know a lot of people are waiting and we're getting very close.
What were you saying?
Yeah, they did it.
They did it.
It was in between.
Can we request that as soon as this presentation on the, this next zoning issue has been done, that we move expeditiously into item eleven? Our citizens have been very patient.
Yes.
With us. And if we could, come back to the text amendment in case it is drawn out.
Yes, you, can we do that, Mr. Brown?
That's fine with me.
Thank you.
I don't think they're here for nine J five. All right, let's do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we can.
He's going to do that first, the zoning.
Oh, you're going to do it first?
He's going to do the zoning. No, I'm asking him to do the zoning and then we wait for the text amendment, the last zoning.
I say we didn't do C.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for the correction.
Okay, Mr. Brown.
Mike Brown, Planning and Development Services. This is rezoning R fifteen one two, oh one two. The applicant is Elizabeth Ralph and Ralph Narright and Jaclyn Carey. The request is a zoning map amendment from C two, commercial light and agriculture to C three, commercial general. It's a single parcel totaling four point oh one acres located at two seven five US Highway seventeen in East Palatka. Here is an aerial photo showing you the, the general location of the site. The future land use is split zone, split future land use with commercial on the front two hundred feet from the right away of US seventeen and urban service area through, for the rest of the parcel. The existing land use is also, our existing zoning is also split with C two on the front part of the parcel and agriculture on the back side. The proposed zoning is to change to C three. And we'll get into that a little later in a second. Again, urban service allows for commercial uses and urban types, urban type uses and where infrastructure, an urban infrastructure will be available within the next ten years. This site, as you're aware, county's running central water and sewer down there. The urban services are available or will be in the near future. The front part is land use of, of commercial and the commercial land use category. Again, is consistent, consists of areas that are intended to serve the primary commercial locations in the future. Much like the urban service area. Under the Land Development Code, the C three, which is the proposed zoning, purpose of C three zoning districts provide general commercial and commercial uses and immediate access to major, minor arterial roadways in rural centers, urban ser, urban reserve and urban service and commercial, both of which the future land, are the future land use of this parcel. US seventeen is classified as a principal arterial in the traffic circulation element of county comprehensive plan. The volume and capacity ratio on US seventeen is zero point one, zero point five H, which means that it, it operates acceptably based on the adopted level of service. The parcel meets the access requirements of the Land Development Code and will not increase non-residential traffic through neighborhood due to direct access to US, US seventeen. The parcel is located in the area of the county with available infrastructure and urban services, including county water and wastewater. The proposed rezoning is consistent with the commercial and urban service future land use designation and the goals, objectives and policies of the comprehensive plan. The proposed rezoning is compatible with the existing and adjacent uses. You have, already have C three adjacent to the south of this parcel. The proposed rezoning is consistent with the locational requirements of the C three zoning. And the Planning Commission recommends approval for the requested zoning. Staff recommendation is approval to re, to rezone the four point oh one acre subject parcel from C two and Ag to C three. The basis for the recommendation is consistency with the local requirement, locational requirements of C three zoning, compatibility, compatibility with existing adjacent uses and consistency with the urban service and commercial future land use designation and consistency with the county comprehensive plan. Any further questions from staff?
Questions, comments for Mr. Brown? Hearing none, I'll open the public portion of the.
Ex parte.
Ex parte. Thank you.
I've had none.
I have none.
None?
None.
I have, sir. I brought the applicants in and we talked to them and set up a meeting with Mr. Brown and Mr. Cato with them. And then I stepped aside and let it go like it was headed down.
Good, Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Okay. We'll open the public portion of the hearing. Anyone wishing to speak at the public portion? Hearing or seeing none, we'll close it for Commissioner deliberation.
Mr. Chair, I, I make a motion that we approve the Planning Commission's recommendation.
Second.
Motion second on the floor. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed like sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Brown. Okay, as promised, we're going to move into item eleven, the Joint Legislative Auditing Committee decision. I think we have a tape, yes. Mr. Cato, if you can get a setup there, if you'll view the monitors.
Mr. Chair, would you like me to discuss this before going to that?
I would, and if, if I could, if anybody would like to have any discussion, comments. The blue cards are in the back of the room in the hallways. You'll see them right where the deputies are standing. And I appreciate it if you could fill those out. It's, we need them for the record.
Mr. Chairman, you, you don't have to, right?
I think.
You prefer it?
I think we do.
You think you have to?
Yes.
It's not required, but it's preferred.
Yeah, we're preferring it. Okay, Mr. Manning?
All right. I'm going to go ahead and, and if you could pass these down. I have a, we, there was a request made to the Joint Legislative Auditing Committee. That request was by letter from Representative Van Zant dated November second. The request was for the auditing committee to conduct an, and I'm going to read you some portions of this letter of the request. An in-depth audit of both Putnam County and the city of Palatka together. He went on to state that his, he's received complaints regarding allegations of many, many improprieties about how Putnam County and Palatka are handling their affairs together. The allegations referenced misuse of money, misrepresentation of information on grant applications, contractor fraud, significant cost overruns on most construction projects, lack of statutory mandated contracts, duplicate or multiple payments for the same work, and a lack of financial oversight or accountability. He referenced words such as illegal, corruption, electioneering, improper law enforcement expenditures on both the county and city levels, establishment of a shell corporation to siphon off funds. He referenced the city of Hampton in which the mayor is in prison and the previous city clerk has been arrested and charged and their police force had been abolished, made comparison to that city. He said that he felt that certain, he felt certain that a simultaneous audit of Palatka and Putnam County would reveal many similar issues as the city of Hampton and also need to be addressed and may explain why this area of his district is so, quote, poor and dying. I've sent that letter down. Attached to it is the staff analysis from the Joint Legislative Auditing Committee staff. The letter also referenced a number of correspondence that Representative Van Zant had received, complaints and allegations. Those were not attached to Representative Van Zant's letter or the staff analysis that was available to me from, from this committee's website, from their agenda. This is what was attached. I have made a public records request for those, for those documents upon which Representative Van Zant relied in making this request. I did make that as a public records request. In that vein, I would say that it was brought to my attention that there was some concern that I had made that request without full board approval. As I pointed out, that board approval is not required for me to, to send requests such as this. Certainly, if the board would like to have that happen in the future, you could advise me of that. The, this legislative committee did meet on Monday, November thirtieth to consider this request. The, there were, I believe it was five members of the public as well as Commissioner Harvey that were at that meeting, supporting Representative Van Zant's request. And there weren't others. There, there was no official note of, the problem that, the issue that I think is the real issue, at least for me, and what has been expressed to me, is that there was no official notification to the chair or to me or to the administrator from the committee that they were going to be considering this request. In that vein, I have prepared a, a letter requesting the opportunity to. In that vein, I have prepared a, a letter requesting the opportunity to appear before that committee, to present responses to the allegations for the chair's signature. I have also prepared a separate letter to the Florida Association of Counties for the chair's signature, requesting that they lobby for some policy changes for this committee to, in the future, provide counties and cities and other entities do, due process, at least some official notification prior to these types of hearings, to give them an opportunity to respond to those. If it is the board's pleasure that one or both of those letters be sent on behalf of the board, we could certainly address that. If you would like me to pass those out later, after we've had some discussion here, I can do that, if that's what you wish.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Manning. Commissioners, any comments, questions?
No, I just, I would like to see the letter, but I think that's a very good idea, and I would-
Thank you, Commissioner Harris. I requested these letters, I think, in response to what I felt was just some unfairness. I understand that this committee's work is new. It's only been around a couple of years in the way they, the process works now, and I think it needs some tweaking, and I think that requests should come from Putnam County. We should stand up and, here we go, they're coming through.
Thank you.
One of each of those letters paper clipped in little packets.
Oh, these are all the same things, so-
You've got-
Okay, I took one clip off here. Each one is, both letters?
Yeah, this is two as well.
Okay, so just pass that clip still.
But all, you know, this letter, to me, is in response to what I felt, a small rural county does not have the representation of some of the larger counties that, an ambush, I hate to use the word, but it was, I felt that way, could happen to any of these small counties, all 16 of us. We have, a lot of times, we share a representative or a senator, and just like this, we had a small county lobbyist, a coalition lobbyist, called me the Saturday before this meeting, and I, I don't want this to happen again to anybody. So, take your time, read it, see what you think.
Mr. Chairman, just one more thing I wanted to add. Not only, I understand that you did not receive an email. I did not personally receive an email about the hearing. I didn't get any notice at all.
None whatsoever.
Well, not from the parties that were bringing it, and not from the committee, the audit committee itself.
And last but not least, from our representative.
Yes, and nothing from our state representative.
Yes, very odd.
Or fellow commissioner.
Are you gonna open up the public while we're reading?
I can do that. Go ahead and read, I wanna, is this the same as, have you viewed it?
Yes.
Okay, I'll do that. All right. We can open the public up, the process right now, for anybody that would like to comment. We have blue cards in the back in the hallways. If, if you choose not to use the blue card, you can still come forward, but please remember to state your name and address very clearly for Tony right here, so we can get it on the record. Mr. Eubanks, I believe you are up to bat, sir. Then Robert Bly.
Chair and commissioners and pet citizens, I, in your request for a letter, Mr. Chair, would you also send one to small county coalition who represents 31 small counties such as I, but mostly the 16 that are in our same area?
It is top and top.
If you don't mind, it's-
It's, it's in there.
His name is Chris Dooling, and Mr. Eubanks, he is the, the person I'm speaking of that notified me Saturday on a holiday weekend.
I, I got your same notification, he's still a friend of mine as well.
Okay.
But I know he's a friend of Putnam County's. He's represented us well for a long time. I, I'm just gonna make a brief statement, and I agree with you too, I feel like we've been ambushed and due process has not, not been achieved here. We not, we weren't notified, Lord bless you, we weren't notified in a proper manner, I guess somewhere. So I gotta, I'm just gonna read you a small statement in that, in my, my time here.
Take your time.
Well, when someone is elected to an office, they receive a title and a respectful sagitation, for example. Elected officials are addressed as your honorable representative, or your honorable commissioner, or your honorable city commissioner, honorable mayor, honorable clerk. In that note, the key word here is honorable. The honorable thing to do when a concern arises is to allow due process to occur and notify all parties that are concerned. We were not. Most important, the process should allow all parties to respond within an acceptable timeframe, and a sufficient review of the response should occur. Unfortunately, due to the process that has, has not been afforded, our local county and our, our city representatives were hung out on a limb pretty much. I hope this can be reversed. So, verification of the facts, well, let me back up. Everyone is entitled. Everyone is entitled to their own opinion. However, not everyone is entitled to their own set of facts. The truth are the facts, and hopefully we'll get to the truth of this, and not let people who have a problem connecting with y'all circumvent the process in which everybody is due, and that's what's happening here. They're not representing the whole county, they're only representing a few. Y'all were, y'all were charged, and so was Representative Van Zant. We'd represent all of us, not a handful, not the ones that they were invited to the meeting that knew about it previously, certainly not your elected officials. The committee needs to convene, rescind the audit to allow due process, review the facts, see if any other investigation is required. To our elected officials that has not done the honorable thing and have forgotten that they should act upon the truth, not an opinion, otherwise they too become purveyors of fear and ignorance. Shame on them. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Eubanks.
Robert Bly, 116 Sand Lake Drive. I went to Tallahassee with the intent of passing along my concerns for what I felt was a lack of, I don't feel like our concerns have been heard here. Many times, we have come to you with the information that was presented to the audit committee. We presented that information here, and we've either been ignored or told we'll look into it, and then had no further communication about it. So, I felt like it was important to go up there, even though I didn't, I was, I was not able to produce a document that said so-and-so, Mr. Smith, I'm sorry, not, not meaning anyone here, but, you know, I couldn't say that I can show you where this money is missing and they put it in their pocket. I can't do that. What I, what I did say was, you know, we are the poorest county. We do need help, and if this audit can point us in a, a direction that we can follow, maybe help us with some procedures that we're using right now that we shouldn't be using, or, in other words, I feel like this audit could be helpful. I don't feel like this is an attack, and I didn't mean it to be an attack, I didn't say it was an attack, but I feel like the perception here is that it's an attack, and I, I don't feel that way. I feel like an audit will uncover things that wouldn't be uncovered otherwise, and if, if we don't have a way to uncover the things that cause us to be the poorest county and have the highest unemployment rate, maybe the state does. So, my suggestion is, let's, let's work with the state. Let's allow them to run their audit, and let's see if they can uncover something that can help us move forward and become a better county. Thank you.
Okay, let me be, clear up some stuff. So you don't support the accusations being made here, but you support the process for the audit, for the audit itself.
What accusations are you-
There are some serious accusations made here. You've seen the film and then seen the bullet points.
He was there.
Do you support them?
I could read some of this, right here on the first page of the letter.
Mm-hmm. Go ahead, Commissioner Harris.
That these allegations consist of misuse of money, including state and federal grant funds, plus misrepresentation of information on grant applications, contractor fraud, significant cost overruns on most construction projects, lack of statutory mandated contracts, duplicate and multiple payments for the same work, and lack of financial oversight and accountability. Additional terms such as illegal, corruption and electioneering are mentioned. That's not an attack.
I, I would hope that the audit would either verify or, or not.
I understand, and, and we're really, we welcome that audit, but I suspect it's going to take over a year. In the meantime, we're painted with this broad brush, was on TV throughout the state of Florida. So, you can speak lightly of it if you want to, but this is pretty serious, and I-
Criminal. It's criminal.
But, what you're saying is it's criminal.
We are accused of wrongdoing, and nothing was produced to indicate specificity of the accusations, and basically, the personal integrity of every sitting commissioner was under attack. And please don't talk unless you're called on by the chair.
Thank you.
Any further, Chair?
That's it.
Thank you.
Okay, we have Ms. Roxanne Weeks.
I would first like to ask, I saw you had this video queued, why you did not show it?
Let's see it.
Yes, let's see it.
Yeah, let's see it. I'd like to play. All about it. Roll it.
Hello. How's everyone doing? Hey, guys.
Sound up.
Well, I'm going to call the meeting to order. Senator Bruzo is not going to be here, so I'm going to be chairing the meeting today, and Joe did not leave me a gavel, so we'll just go ahead and do that. Okay, so Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Senator Ben Aquisto.
Here.
Senator Bradley.
Here.
Senator Gibson.
Here.
Representative Mayfield.
Here.
Representative Murphy.
Here.
Representative Rollerson.
Here.
Representative Rodriguez.
Here.
Senator Simpson.
Here.
Representative Stafford.
Going to fast forward to the point where-
Very good, thank you, Kathy. Senator Bruzo and Representative Stafford are both excused for today. Anyone who wishes to speak, if you-
Has taken corrective action to the extent possible using existing resources. And that is the motion, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator. Are there any questions? Any debate? Okay, please call the roll.
Senator Ben Aquisto. Senator Bradley.
Yes.
Senator Gibson.
Yes.
Representative Mayfield.
Yes.
Representative Murphy.
Yes.
Representative Rodriguez.
Yes.
Senator Simpson.
Yes.
Representative Rollerson.
Okay, the motion passes, if we did the math on that correctly. So, thank you very much. Thank you for the motion, thank you, members, for voting on that. Our next item will be an audit request from Representative Van Zant for an audit of Putnam County and the city of Palatka, and Representative, if you are ready, we'd like to hear your presentation. Thank you, sir, for being here. Thank you. Well, thank you all for hearing me today, I appreciate it. For approximately a year now, and intensely throughout this year of 2015, I keep hearing a lot of complaints from constituents. We all get that. We all have about the same number of constituents, except senators have almost three times as many. However, now, for several months, I've been getting people calling for appointments, coming to my office in Palatka, and laying out records and things that show that there is some real fire where the smoke is. Several years ago, I asked you, I asked you for a three-year audit of the city of Stark and the, Rob, what was the other? The city of Hampton, and that resulted in some real audit findings. In fact, when the audit was finished, it was discovered that they had broken 31 different laws, and the money was never recovered, and the bulk of it still hasn't been, but the result of that was, they have no other employees that were employed at that time. They have a complete new mayor and city council, the previous mayor's in prison for five years, and the previous city clerk has been arrested and charged, and these findings are continuing to go on as charged. And so, today, when these citizens came to me, I said, "Well, all I know is to ask for an audit." So today, I'm coming to you asking for a simultaneous audit for the years 11, 12, 12, 13, and 13, 14 of the city of Palatka and Putnam County together. And we have, Mr. Chair, some, about a half a dozen folks who would like to address the committee, and these people have driven a long way to speak their piece. I've asked them to keep it between three and five minutes and briefly just, and not repeat themselves, but to tell you different things that they've shared with me, and so I would appreciate it if you could hear from them. Thank you, Representative Van Zant.
Good afternoon. My name is Roxana Regan Weeks. For a couple of years, I have been following the actions of the city commission and also the county commission. There's quite a bit of deception when I ask for explanations and things. For instance, in, in your, in your packet that I gave you about the PCSO vehicle purchase, I did a spreadsheet, and on page two of that, you'll see that in 2012, the total, and this is from the vendor account summaries that I obtained from the sheriff's financial office. He's given an $18 million a year budget, and he buys his cars out of that. This total is $281,549. The next page is his annual summary for the fiscal year 2012, and then you'll see under capital outlays for auto equipment, now he's saying the cost is 800, $291, I'm sorry, $800,000. Then on the last page, if you look at the comprehensive annual financial report prepared by the county for the fiscal year 2012, it says the sheriff purchased new vehicles totaling $986,000, and it's quite a discrepancy, and nobody's been able to explain it. In the next packet, if you look at table three at the bottom, you'll- On the next page, the, if you look at the bottom of table three, it's, it's fifty-four million, one hundred and fifty-five thousand, six hundred and thirty-four dollars. On the next page, you'll see a different total, slightly different. And then on the, you'll, I'm sorry, but you'll have to go back and forth to table three. Um, the first page, this is as far back as I could go. Um, these are the actual CAFR reports. Um, it shows the actual amount in two thousand and six is five million, six hundred and ninety-two thousand, two hundred and ten. But on table three, it shows five million, three hundred and ninety-nine thousand. That's a difference of three hundred thousand dollars. Um, I jumped ahead to the last two years. I have all the years in between, but I jumped ahead. You'll see that for thirteen, uh, the total revenue is four million, five hundred and ninety-five thousand. But then when you look at it on table three, it's four million, four hundred and ninety-nine. And then for fiscal year fourteen, revenues on the last page show four, four million, eight hundred and thirty-two thousand, but in table three, it's four million, six hundred and thirty-two thousand. There's just hundreds of thousands of dollars worth discrepancy. And, and in the interim years, it can vary anywhere from twenty to thirty, but these were the largest. The last packet I'd like you to look at is, um, involving the Palatka Golf Course. Um, they contracted with a company, um, five years ago. They had employees of that company approach the city finance director and then the, uh, police department. They brought in FDLE and, um, secret service agents, and they had FDLE do a spot audit of it. They found, in that time, it was for a fifteen-month period, in that time, they found one hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars that had been, um, voided from the, uh, cash registers. They were, um, acting as a bank for their customers. They accrued, you'll see in these two reports, um, the first is the executive summary. It's a twelve-page summary by Chief Getchell of the Palatka Police Department, and the, uh, remainder is the detective summary. Um, they say they cannot tell, unless they have an, uh, a comprehensive audit, exactly what's missing. They, they show a hundred and sixty-three thousand in this fifteen-month period, and the chief recommended a audit, but the city took no action. And this was in last year. And, um, I have been to the city commission. We had a new mayor and two new commissioners take office in January, and I've been before them publicly, and they have taken no action on this. Um, it appears that, you know, it, these, these amounts of money in this five-year period, that it could be close to a million dollars they've stolen. And you'll see in these reports, they show there's definite, um, obstruction and an attempt by them. There's an email I included in the packet also. You'll see that one of the commissioners tells the city manager, "I wouldn't leave town today to pick up a dog if I were you. When this hits the media, there's gonna be a firestorm." But it never hit the media. It never got public, and it just leaked out by the police department.
Ms. Weeks, thank you.
Oh, okay.
Please, do, we'll get some other folks to speak, but go ahead and wrap up. I mean, I did not want to cut you short. I just wanted to-
But there's a great many things. Um, I have records on the city going back six years and on the county going four years, and it's, it's just astounding. It truly is. And I will hope that you can help us, because Putnam County is the highest in unemployment, and it's poor, and we need the money that we're awarded in grants and all, and it's not filtering down to the citizens for the community.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am. Well, thank you for your time, and we appreciate your empirical evidence you brought forward. Thank you very much. Leroy Kaimon? Excuse me? Kaimon? And what we'll do, folks, is try and give it three to four minutes, and we appreciate you guys coming here. I want you to have plenty of time to talk.
Leroy Kaimo, one-one-seven Gladys Avenue, east Palatka, Florida, three-two-one-three-one. I'm here today to speak briefly on the, uh, Dog Branch Canal. Uh, I've been for the, like, in two months of being six years this last time, trying to get the canal clean. And they told me that they needed to get a grant. Okay? Then they come back and told me that they had got the grant. When I asked about when they were gonna clean the canal, they told me they had to take the a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars to do a study plan with an engineer. I went out to the, uh, St. John Water Management, and I asked them. They told me anytime that the county would come out there and request to get a permit to clean the canal, they would do it. The reason is, they have cleaned this year five times on that side of two oh seven. So when the water come up to two oh seven, they stopped. So then, when it started raining, like, we've had all this rain, that water backs up on the north side of the road. So, the other night, when Mr. Van Zant was over there at the meeting, I got up and I asked about it, and he said something to the county commissioner, Mr. Chip Lival, and he told them the reason they had not cleaned the opposite side of the road was because of all the nutrients that, that they didn't want in the river. So there's a whole community of people, white and black, is in there, and all this cesspooling in there. Then, then they told me that they just need some more money. They haven't done it. We were supposed to have two roads built in there years ago, two short streets, about a block long. Never got them. Last year, I started talking about the two little short block-long road that they were supposed to put in there. I got up that morning early, I hear somebody, they're out there dumping some milling on the road.
Hmm.
From, it's about a block long. They just put some milling out there, and you know how that is, just like that. And it's been so much that it's happening. When it rain in there, the lady that live down there have to move out. She can't even buy insurance on her house or nothing, because the water just backs up in there like a, make a reservoir. And they just don't do anything about it. Any question?
Thank you, sir. We appreciate your time.
All right.
Okay. Next, Robert Bly.
Robert Bly, Mona Park, Florida. Um, I come here to support the audit. I'm asking for the state's help in finding out where our money's going. Uh, I am, I'm not an auditor myself. I, I can look at numbers and go right to sleep. Uh, there are good people that have been working really hard, though, and, uh, you've heard from a couple already. There, there is money missing, there's mismanagement. Um, you know, I, I know I can't call for an audit for mismanagement, but, um, I believe that the mismanagement, uh, is, is important. If an audit would, uh, help to identify, um, people doing wrong, I would fully support it, and, and I'm asking for your help with that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any questions? Okay, thank you. Timothy Hottaling?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Basically, got two circumstances, um, and I've given you a couple documents, all of them. Putnam Water Taxi, that since two thousand and, uh, eleven, has been, uh, under construction, and nobody's seen it, while seven hundred and sixty-some thousand dollars of FDOT money's gone out the door. Um, pardon me, a little bit nervous here.
That's okay.
Started backwards and forwards. Uh, I've been here, been in Florida for two years. I did, uh, cops and robbers work for thirty years, did a lot of fraud stuff. Um, came to Putnam County about the time they're having a big hurrah over the landfill, whether they're gonna, um, sell a dump and, and whatever, so I started hanging out and watching what was going on. And they do a really good job of spending our money, so I kept watching a little bit more. Became aware of, uh, Commissioner Larry Harvey, uh, having to represent a bunch of people on a road that, uh, you heard of the Better Place Plan, um, infrastructure penny tax thing. They had a road that was dirt. It was paved. In thirty days, it was back to being dirt with potholes. Uh, it was worse than it was before. I, a little bit later, was out to another meeting, talked to a, uh, citizen who witnessed the contractor who would actually take, uh, get an approval to put asphalt on a road, bring in a front-end loader after the, they only had one inspector for seven hundred and eighty square miles of Putnam County, fifteen projects, so he wasn't around a lot. Um, inspected leave, he'd bring a front-end, uh, loader and scoop up the, the bedrock and take it down to the next stretch, and then pave over half of the bedrock. There's all kinds of standards of what you gotta buy and inspect and all that that they never did, which is documentable. Um, so they, he'd bring some bedrock that was a slurry, and their paving machine would fall through. All of this, during this time, I talked to my county councils. You've got a letter back of August that I, I wrote to my councilman saying, "What the heck over? You need to do something." Um, they don't, didn't choose to do anything. Uh, my final one, which should be a letter that came with some attachments that you all received previously, comes down to the summation of, okay, what, what is a entity supposed to do when the executive manager you hire to manage doesn't manage? Which is the case, and it all, it's come to a, a screeching halt. I went to the, uh, um, FDLE. I made you have a copy of a, a request for criminal prosecution for the contractor, for contract fraud. Um, I went to the licensing and regulation. They don't regulate pavers. Um, I went to Pam Bondi's office. Cities and counties are her clients. There is no client for the average person, so y'all are the only, you know, the last resort. I got into this 'cause Mr. Van Zant and our senator were having a legislative meeting. And I came and I asked, "Y'all need an inspector general available." Um, there's one county, I pointed out, they have it right in the county. Putnam doesn't, with independence and an ability to go knock on doors and an ability to look what's wrong in Putnam County is systemic. The, uh, you'll see in the letter there, the, uh, very strong, uh, county administrator has developed enough power and authority to change, to, to write county ordinances to where he identifies the material and the stuff to be worked on. He makes a recommendation for that. He writes the bid process. He uncovers, unfolds the bid process. The alleged Director of Purchasing, I've never seen her, I've never heard her name, seen any squiggles or anything, uh, but she's supposed to control all of this. This doesn't happen, uh, because the county administrator is the individual who is responsible for any investigative review of any irregularities in the bid process. So he's the, the end-all, do-all. It's a systemic prob, process. There are some, you know, economic consequences. Um, let me leave that, and I real, I appreciate the extra time.
Sure.
Um, the great Water Taxi, uh, I think you might enjoy reading what I put a lot of time into on that. The lovely little city councilwoman really wants a paddle-wheel boat to bring tourists in. Can't get it unless you do this, that, and the other. She found a soft touch and got, uh, federal Department of Transportation money that flows down through, uh, FDOT for a Water Taxi that's gonna move people from one side of the river to the other, so that they don't use the Memorial Bridge, and we're gonna save exhaust fumes. Um, it's been since two thousand and eleven. Um, they had the serious misfortune of contracting with a thief, in my opinion, from everything I've seen. He's taken three-quarters of a million dollars belonging to other people's, other people's tax dollars, mostly DOT. They caught him. The city lawyer wrote a letter to him, saying, "Shame on you. You know this invoice for eighty thousand dollars? There's nothing in it that's true." Bear in mind, this is a federal funds, state funds, and you got this little warning on there, saying you're gonna go to, you know, to hell or, or jail or whatever if you fib. They've got this thing, the, the city lawyer points out, is a total fib. But there's nobody that goes to look to put this guy in jail, and they continue to give him your money. I think it needs a review.
Thank you, sir. We will sort of take that, so thank you for your time and all the information you've given us. Thank you so much. And next we have Larry Harvey.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I want to point out that Mr. Harvey is a commissioner.
Yes.
That has come today to speak also, that believes that-
Okay.
This is all going on. He's been a commissioner now for several years. Larry come-
Oh, okay. Trying to spell, missed him there.
Thank you, Representative, and, thank you, committee, for allowing me to speak this afternoon.
We'll get to-
I did get appointed by the governor in two thousand and fourteen and ran again, and now I'm there for eight years, I mean, four years. Um, my name is Larry Harvey. I am a county commissioner from Putnam County. I rise in support of citizens' concerns and the-
Honorable Charles Van Zant. This event today is led by the citizens of Putnam County. Putnam County's population is close to seventy-three thousand citizens. I refer to as employees, not just, I mean, employers, not just citizens. My goal today is to encourage this honorable body, you, to grant and prove the requested action. Putnam County is one of the poorest counties in Florida with a shrinking tax base, businesses struggling, citizens moving and relocating in order to survive. Taxes are on the, the rise at all levels, and reserve spending are at a four-year high. Putnam County is a proud and giving community. I love Putnam County and the people there, and I have my whole life. I went to elementary school all the way to college, and currently, the government complex that we occupy was the grocery store that I bag groceries in, at sixteen years of age. So, circle does come around a little bit. Putnam County has many projects that should, should help inspire our economy and our economic development. This year, uh, with the help of Representative Van Zant and Senator Hudson, um, we were able to secure a Department of Economic Development grant that will basically look at our infrastructure and our assets and see what we can do to better position ourselves as a regional leader. Um, we have a water- I rise in support of citizens' concerns and the honorable Charles Van Zant. This event today is led by the citizens of Putnam County. Putnam County's population is close to 73,000 citizens. I refer to as employees, not just, I mean employers, not just citizens. My goal today is to encourage this honorable body, you, to grant and prove the requested action. Putnam County is one of the poorest counties in Florida with a shrinking tax base, businesses struggling, citizens moving and relocating in order to survive. Taxes are on the rise at all levels and reserve spending are at a four-year high. Putnam County is a proud and giving community. I love Putnam County and the people there, and I have my whole life. I went to elementary school all the way to college, and currently the government complex that we occupy was the grocery store that I bag groceries in at 16 years of age. So circle does come around a little bit. Putnam County has many projects that should help inspire our economy and our economic development. This year, with the help of Representative Van Zant and Senator Hudson, we were able to secure a Department of Economic Development grant that will basically look at our infrastructure and our assets and see what we can do to better position ourselves as a regional leader. We have a water and wastewater plant going on right now. The groundbreaking will be tomorrow in East Palatka, Road, State Road 20 in the West Putnam area, Highway 17 South Putnam, and many other things. I will mention our current finances. Our millage rate is just over nine mills. The B.O.C.C. on a four-to-one vote raised taxes and took over $3 million out of reserves to balance the budget. We are going to be close this year to $50 million debt. At this rate, we have less than three years before massive cuts to services and, and massive tax increases will have to happen. I understand that government, as well as private sectors, has to have a problem in order to solve the problem, but we can't continue down this path. Since I've been there, I've spent more time in the finance department than any other department. I've sought the answers to the ever-moving question. I've had challenges in asking the right questions to get the right answers, as we all probably do. I have studied and attended and completed my certified county commission designation and now working on my advanced county commission designation with the Florida Association of Counties to help me better understand the process. I say that to say this, by statute or design, our county finances are complicated and intermingling. I have had some great help. Our clerk of the court, the Honorable Tim Smith, has been a great ally. His finance director, John Jones, our deputy county administrator, Mr. Mike Anderson, and other staff members have helped me beyond belief. In closing, I trust the people of Putnam County. I trust Representative Van Zant. I trust the process. Putnam County is at an intersection in his life. Do we take a hard, realistic look at ourself? With your help, do we ask the questions that need to be asked? Do we take responsibilities for our past? And do we make Putnam County better for our children and grandchildren? I say yes. Let's move the county forward. We have a new deputy administrator slash finance director, a new county attorney. Our administrator is retiring soon, from my understanding. A new day for Putnam County will be upon us, and promoting Putnam County is what I and we all should be about. Putnam County is a great place to work, raise a family, enjoy environment that God has entrusted with us. But we need your help. If we are doing good, then audit will show that. If we need to have improvements, the audit will show that also. And then we can move Putnam County and propel it into the future. How can we grow our county without the hard facts? I want the truth. I want the truth to make Putnam great again. Thank you for your time, and I support the proposed county audit. Thank you for your time and service.
Thank you, Commissioner Harvey, and thank you for your time and service. We appreciate you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Representative Mayfield.
Is my mic on? I can't turn my phone.
It's on.
Okay. When the, the previous gentleman had indicated that there was a strong administrator...
Yes, ma'am.
...position there, which it sounded to me that some of the problems was the administrator was running the county and making decisions without the county commissioners, or either the county commissioners gave him the authority to make those decisions. Have you changed anything structure-wise or staffing-wise where those decisions should be coming through the county commission versus giving a staff person that authority?
We do have a very strong administrator, and we have four current board members. Five of us, but four are really entrenched in that, that way of doing it. They believe that everything's fine, and, and questions to be asked are very minimal at times. So to answer your question, I think it behooves us all to do a better job at what we're doing, including myself, but there's only so many questions I can ask and there's only so many answers I can get. But hopefully, we can move forward through this process and kind of reel some of this in. Yes, ma'am. I hope I answered your question properly.
So are you, well, so are you looking at how you're structured, your staff? Because my understanding would be you would be the ultimate people of structuring your staff.
Yes, ma'am.
And giving them the authority to do certain things. Is there other counties that you've looked at to see how they're structured and how it's working versus how, you know, what you guys are doing now? And are you guys moving toward that?
Representative, I don't believe so. I think that the, the power is implied, and it's just been there a very long, long time, and it's entrenched in doctrine right now. And to, to break that grip is very difficult. And I'd like to see changes, as you heard in my presentation, but we, we have to ask for it, and we're not, the majority is not. I will say that.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Senator Gibson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and maybe, I know you're trying to get through this and certainly allow everyone who came from Palatka to speak, but I would, I have a few questions, but I'll just start with this way. How many, I didn't see anything in the documents as to how many commissioners there are. Is there a chair of the commission? Is that you or...
No, ma'am. There's five commissioners from five different geographical areas in the county, and we run at a county-large basis. So we all run at-large in our county. And I am not the chair. Our chairman this year is Mr. Chip Lible, and our vice chairman is Mr. Walton Palisir.
And so, may I...
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And since you're the only commissioner here, and I don't remember seeing anything in our documents from any other commissioners, are the commissioners, your colleagues, the other four, aware of the requests for the audit and couldn't come today or couldn't write us a letter or what's, what's the deal with that?
I can't tell you what they're doing, but we were notified Saturday by email that this was going to take place.
Oh, Saturday?
And then I've gotten another email from our administrator this afternoon with all the documents in, but I felt it very important to make my way to Tallahassee and support the citizens. Again, if we have a problem, let's find the problem. If we don't have a problem, that'll also show that to Senator.
I have one final, kind of...
Certainly.
...wrapping the boat thing. Well, my first question I ask though, is there a chair of the...
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Chip Lible is the chairman. Yes, ma'am.
And in the, I mean, obviously, there's a lot going on that I'm not sure, the audit can fix certain things, but other allegations I don't think this committee can, can deal with.
Correct.
And actually, I had Putnam County in my district when I first came to the Senate, so I'm familiar with the water project that, you know, has been going on for years and years and, and that Mary Lawson Brown has tried to bring to, to fruition. And so, in terms of the request for the audit, it says both county and city. And so, is it your opinion that there's some collusion between the two? There's mismanagement by both? And the commission, the other commissioners are not aware of it, aware of it, or just aren't up on that they should be in line with requesting? What's, what's, I mean, yeah.
Senator, I can't speak for the city of Palatka. I'm a county commissioner.
Oh, you're a county commissioner?
Yes, ma'am. And I don't know if there's any collusion between the two organizations whatsoever. I just know that our citizens have been requesting since I've been appointed and elected that we get to the bottom of things, and it looks like this is the last stop for that. And again, this is a citizen-led agenda. So the citizens have came to Representative Van Zant, and I just want to stand here in support of what the citizens want to do in Putnam County. I think that's very important.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Commissioner, thank you very much.
Thank you, Representative.
We have one more, Mr. John Spell. Mr. Spell, are you here? Thank you.
How everybody doing? I'm here to support Mr. Kaymore because I know Mr. Harvey had worked at trying to get the Dog Branch Canal cleaned out. And, you know, it's kind of sad that last year they dug that one ditch five times, which it was a ditch, but it's turning into a canal. And, you know, the thing about the citizens that actually live right on the other side of the road, they wouldn't even take the time to come and try to open it up, at least for the water to come through, because you take the farmers, they use all those chemicals, insecticide and pesticide, but then when you get to where the water gets so high to, the fire department actually have to tow the lady out of her house, and Mr. Harvey went through the trouble with us of trying to get the ditch clean. They want to make everyone think that they don't have the stuff to do. I got an excavator, they got one just as large as I do, and it don't take that much to go in there and open it up. They'll clean over 200 acres of farm field, but then when it comes to going right across the road and do the same thing, they don't have the equipment to do it. But all it take is farmers, certain farmers, to call, and I don't knock against farmers because I'm a farmer, but even when I have water backup on me, they don't have the equipment and the money. And, you know, to me, it's not fair to actually, the way they actually run the county. But even when you send money, I would wish, a lot of times, y'all will come and look at the situation. We got so many bad-conditioned roads, we got so many areas with concrete where the trees done surfacing, and then you got them, they use eminent domain to take property in certain areas to where they want to dress it up. And it's sad to know the state will give grant money to do it, then they don't never come out and look at some of the shabby jobs. You got sidewalks goes up and then goes down into the ground, and just look any kind of way, you know? If you're not gonna do it right, you know, don't do it at all. They got a road they paved about oh, four years ago. Now they got the road blocked off, tearing it up to replace coves. Why didn't they can replace the cove before they even paved the road? But they just throw so much money away. I've been going to the county commissioner meetings now over five years, but if y'all can do an audit and get rid of some of the problems that we actually got, then I can just stick to basic work. So thank you for listening.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for coming and giving us that information. Representative Van Zant, you ready to close?
Yes, sir. And again, thank all of you for hearing my constituents. Of the seven counties that I've represented during my tenure here in the House, Putnam County has continually had the worst problems over and over and over. It just doesn't seem to slack up. And as you see, they get money to do something, and then they will actually neglect that until a lady is stranded and they have to go rescue her, just because they want to clean out a ditch. I don't know about what all the audit is going to show. My heartfelt feeling is that you're gonna have a lot of findings. Now, I know that you all can't do anything about any problems from a legal standpoint, but if we at least identify those findings, then I think that we can have some better elections and change the whole makeup of the county so that it functions well. As far as the administrator that you were asking about, Representative Mayfield, I'm told that this particular administrator makes $150,000 a year, as the county administrator has no contract and spends an additional $25,000 or so a year unauthorized. That's silly. I mean, that should not be going on. And as far as the, Senator Gibson, as far as the co-mingling of funds, I don't know this, but I'm told that the city applied for a grant. And then at the last minute, the city withdrew their grant, and the county applied for the same grant and got it. And then they went and did a little work on one of the city buildings and spent the money for other purposes. I don't know all of these things, but I think if we have a audit that will audit both the city and the county simultaneously, we'll discover that. I'm also told that the city, and I know this, this golf course that the city owns for years has lost money, and they go in debt, and the golf course is not well-used, and, but it's used by a few people that are leaders in the community, and, but it doesn't seem to pay its own way, but they keep supporting it with taxpayer funding. And so there's some questions that just keep coming to my mind that ought to be answered. So I'm asking for a three-year audit of all of these questions that have come to me. It seems like if we do the fiscal years of 11, 12, 12, 13, and 13, 14 simultaneously, we're gonna find out a lot. And so that's my request, and thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, members, for hearing my constituents today. Incidentally, may I say one other thing?
Certainly.
This past year, in the midst of all of this, Putnam County was declared by Wall Street 24/7 to be the poorest county in Florida. The city of Palatka is purported to be the poorest city in Florida. And just this past month, if I understand it right, the Putnam County has been declared to be the most unhealthy county in Florida. The city has been declared by the League of Cities or some such to be the only dying city in Florida, and the reason is people are moving out. Yet Putnam County and the city of Palatka are on the St. John's River between thriving counties, Clay County, St. John's County, and Marion County. I mean, thriving counties, but yet they can't seem to survive because somewhere, it seems that the money that's coming in isn't going out to the right places. So that's my close. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Representative. Any questions for the representative? Yes. Senator Verrickson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I thank you, Representative, for bringing these allegations to light, however we move forward. And I thank the constituents for coming up from back home. It's, it's never easy, but, but we do thank you for your input. I guess my question is, the, the representatives from the city and the county, are they here? Do they have anyone here to at least acknowledge that these allegations are being made and offer some kind of justification or explanation? It, it sort of informs my decision moving forward if they're not even here to speak up for themselves.
Yeah. The only people here are people that came to our delegation meeting. Many of the city and county leaders were there, and all of these grievances were heard, many of them, most all of them, at the delegation meeting, and I promised them that I would try to get them a hearing before your committee. And that was in front of all of the commissioners and for the city and the county that were there, but they knew that this was gonna come down the pike. I didn't send them a letter or anything notifying them, no, ma'am.
For a follow-up?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. But have they been notifying that there is a hearing today on matters said and of...
They were, but just a few days ago. But they could have come if they'd wanted to.
And they, they have no one here representing them to make a statement at all? Okay, thank you.
Senator Gibson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I generally asked that question earlier, but I, I mean, I don't, I have some more questions on the audit circumstance, but I don't think it is timely notice over a holiday weekend to send someone an email that there's gonna be a hearing on Monday that is impacting their city and their county, and unless the, the state is paying for the audit, it impacts their dollars, and we've already heard they're the poorest city and county. And so, I'm not sure you'd want to get a committee meeting notice by email on Saturday for a meeting today. And so before we decide that the county and city, other county and city commissioners don't care, I think we should take that into consideration that there is duly noticed meetings, and they're, they're not. So I, I'm not, I don't believe that they're necessarily derelict by not being here. I'm just not sure that they got...
No, I'm not saying anyone's derelict by not being here.
I didn't say you were. I'm using my words.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm, I'm just not convinced that they don't care about what happens in their city and county if they don't have proper time to prepare to be, appear at a hearing.
Thank you, Senator. And Kathy, would you address that? Thank you.
The committee is required to provide a one-week notice, and as our, as our normal practice, the, this agenda was published last Monday in the House and Senate calendar.
Thank you.
However, yes, Senator, go ahead.
Thank you. And the Senate and House calendar is not notification, direct notification to the county and city commissioners. I'm not sure they look at our calendar. So I'm just, thank you, though.
Good point. Senator Radley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Could you explain what you mean by us giving one-week notice?
Kathy.
It's our, it's our public meeting notice. Joint rules require our committee to provide seven-day notice.
But not to the, not directly to the entity?
No. No, there's no requirement for that.
Okay.
Maybe there should be, but, yeah, certainly, go ahead.
That, that, um, that needs to change. I mean, if we're going to have a, a discussion of a local community that has, you know, then, then, you know, basic due process should require that the local manager and commissioners get, I think, direct in-the-mail notice that we're gonna be talking about them on statewide television, you know, in ways that are very unflattering. If they then choose... If they then choose not to show up, then that speaks volumes. But now, they haven't, they have a reason to say we would have been there had we had known about it. And they may not have a good reason. And if we're gonna vote today, I'm voting in support of the audit. But, but that doesn't change my deep
Excuse me. Staff's been told to pause the video so that they can change the DVD for records purposes. So once you change the DVD, we'll resume the video autoplay.